I know, I don't know. Wait, let me go.
Good morning, I mean, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular board meeting on the date of February 25th. And at this point, I would like to ask Sarah Zhang to lead us in the flag salute.
So I think Sarah's running a minute late, so could we have somebody jump in for us and do the pledge?
Can I do it?
What happened? Oh.
What's your name? Tali Goldcorn?
What's your name?
Tali Goldcorn.
Tali, okay.
Okay, face the flag, place your right hand over your heart, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'd like to now call on Karina Kruger to lead us in the, or give us the mission and vision, please.
The BHUSD mission is educational excellence, and the BHUSD vision is that our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
Thank you very much. And now Benjamin Bakshian, the community pledge, please.
The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty, listen and acknowledge differences of opinion, do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members, and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive. Thank you.
Approval of the agenda, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Stern, and...
I will second.
Yeah, one thing, I want to make sure we pull item 12B, approval of the second reading of Board Policy 5117, inter-district attendance, for further review and bringing it back at a later date.
Thank you very much. The item has been pulled from the agenda and will be reviewed later. Okay, I got a motion of, who was the second? Was that you, Mr. Stewart? Okay, a call for the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Was there any approval of closed session, Dr. Hasty?
No, there was no action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Okay. So at this point, I would like to turn this over to Dr. Hasty, who will present Mr. Stewart and some of the wonderful spotlights that we have going on going forward tonight.
For the teacher spotlight, Principal Drew Stewart and Assistant Principal Shannon Kolitz will introduce BHS, BHS academic decathlon team Danielle Bordein, Da Song, or Peter Kang, and Karina Kruger, Nicholas Lau, Lindsay Jada Moreno, Alicia Ri, and Jacob Treiman, and Sarah Zhang, along with Teacher Ms. Marie Fein.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hasty. President Marcus, Board of Education, we want to thank you for having us here tonight and for allowing me to introduce our outstanding academic decathlon team who are standing here. You'll notice that they are holding a trophy, we're going to explain that in just a second. Our Acadaca team has advanced to compete at the state competition for the fifth year in a row. In order to earn this spot, this team placed fifth among 55 teams in our recent Laco regional competition, and it's the highest place that I think any of us can remember. I mean, I was there at the luncheon with them, the award luncheon, and it was amazing because as like nine started getting called down, then they're like, it's not us, eight, and as we kept going, they're like, oh my god, we're going to be in the, and so it was watching their reaction to finishing in the top five was incredible because it means trophies, it means getting on stage, and it means going to state. So, just an incredible job, and I'm going to let Ms. Fein speak in just a second. So, this was out of the 55 teams in the recent Laco regional competition where the decathletes tested their knowledge covering economics, math, science, art, music, literature, and social science, focusing on this year's theme, which was chosen as climate change. Decathletes presented prepared and impromptu speeches, they wrote essays and were interviewed to demonstrate their skills. So as Dr. Hasty mentioned earlier, the members of our official team earned the following honors. Jacob Tryman, who I was sitting next to at the luncheon, and the table started to tilt with all of the medals that he won, but he won the gold medal in speech, and he received a perfect score for speech, a perfect score. Silver medal in economics, a bronze medal in the essay, a gold medal in interview, also a perfect score, so two perfect scores. And a silver medal in science. Sarah Zhang, we have over here as well, she had a silver medal in interview, gold medal in speech, a bronze medal in essay, a silver medal in mathematics, and she was also the top-scoring overall decathlete for our team. So congratulations to Sarah. Karina Kruger earned a bronze medal in art, a silver medal in essay, a silver medal in interview, and a silver medal in speech. So again, collecting much hardware. Nicholas Lau earned a silver medal, a silver medal in essay, we can give him a round of applause as well. Leah Levy earned a silver medal in essay, a bronze medal in interview, a bronze medal in literature, and a silver medal in speech. Congratulations, Leah. Alicia Ri earned a bronze medal in essay, a bronze medal in speech. Peter Kang earned a silver medal in interview. And Lindsay Jada Moreno won a bronze medal in speech. And then our official team was rounded out by Danielle Bordein, and they will compete, they will next compete in the state essay testing here at BHHS on March 5th. Then on March 20th through the 23rd, they will compete in person at Santa Clara, so they're traveling up north for this amazing state competition with the objectives of prepared and impromptu speech, an interview, and a super quiz. In addition to that, our junior team, we would like to also recognize for their high scores in the following events, and they're not here, but we just want to recognize, or some of them may be here. Nima Farnod, a bronze certificate in speech, Grace Chang, a silver certificate in speech, Jiang Jung, a silver certificate in speech, and Hannah Davis, a gold certificate in speech. So our junior team members will compete next in the heptathlon on March 8th. And so we will award them with their certificates in just a second, but I wanted to let Ms. Fein, who is their incredible and dedicated coach for the past many years, and we just continue to watch this program grow both in numbers and in their accomplishments, so I wanted her to have a second to just kind of give her brief thoughts for her team.
I mean, I'm very lucky in that the students really run this program. I simply cheer them on. So it's really thanks to their hard work and dedication because they are running weekend sessions, they are running after-school sessions, they are running summer sessions, all to go ahead and improve this program. I'm simply giving them the support whenever they ask for it. So it's really kudos to them that they have accomplished this. So, thank you.
All right. And so we will hand out our awards, if you could, if you wouldn't mind doing that. We have Daniel.
So he's not here.
Oh, Daniel's not here, okay. And Sarah. Congratulations to our 24, 25 academic decathlon team, and go get them at state, guys.
Do we have, we're going to have some more, but is there any comments on the academic decathlon? Remy?
Congratulations, first of all, and I already know I've always seen and I always hear about your hard work and dedication to this program, and all four years of high school, I've always heard Acadaca being on top and always winning everything, so congratulations, and I hope, I wish you the best of luck for the state competition.
Thank you.
Mr. Russell.
Stuart. Or Stuart.
I just want to congratulate all of you. I absolutely rue the day when you walk into your first job interview and dominate. But just congratulations, you know, just to take the phrase from K-Bev, you guys are what's right about Beverly. Just, you know, amazing achievements, and you're going to need a security guard with all that metal on you. So just congratulations, and just keep up the good work.
Not too much to add, just, Mr. Stewart and Ms. Fein, thank you for all your efforts to support these students. You guys are what it's all about, you guys are why we're here, so thank you for joining us tonight and reminding us, our students are the North Star, and to see your success is just what it's all about. Congratulations.
Congratulations, and Judy took all the words out of my mouth, you are our rising stars, and we wish you all the luck, and you're a pure example for Beverly, and thank you for working so hard, and it shows, it shows.
Congratulations, and I'd like to say that, what you may not know, but a lot of the grownups behind closed doors were always talking about educational excellence and educational achievement, and, you know, there's a lot of things that we deal with on the board, but this is really something that makes us smile, and makes us proud, and makes us really think that, you know, this is the center, the central part and goal of BHUSD. And so a couple of things that I've heard from this is, it was fifth out of 55, that's pretty darn good. There were lots of gold medals spoken about, some perfect scores, and all this really is academic excellence, but more than that, we all know the saying that says that doing more than others think you should is the way to be truly excellent. And so when I hear you guys are doing things after school, you're doing things on the weekends, you're doing things over the summer, you know, that's incredible, and that's what it takes, and you guys know that, and I'm just really impressed, and I hope that you will continue to do that next year, for those of you who are around. Thank you.
Well, I get to say the final few words. You are an inspiration to all of the kids who are freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. I assume that all of you are seniors, am I, no?
Most of us.
Most, not all.
Were there any returns, the ones that we...
Three, three of us aren't seniors.
Oh, wow, I'm looking forward to seeing you again next year, then. That's wonderful, and I have to iterate the words that this is what it's all about. Seeing you guys achieve with the help of your special teacher and everything, it just, it makes me fell to see what our school is doing, and these are the things that make us so proud. We don't do the work, but we get to reap the benefits. So, thank you so much for all your hard work, I look forward to seeing some, and for those of you not returning, I hope you get to the school of your choice, you deserve it.
Thank you.
And by the way, one little kind word for Mr. Tryman.
Yes.
You know your mother and I have a history.
I heard.
Okay, thank you.
Congrats again to our Acadaca team. And then it is also my honor to present four more students tonight. You had the pleasure of meeting these four and a couple of others earlier in the year when they were semifinalists, but we are so pleased to announce tonight that these four have moved on to become considered finalists for the National Merit Scholarship Program. And so we are going to have them come up, if they could come join me up here. So again, it is my honor and privilege to welcome everybody, and tonight, we get to celebrate the outstanding achievements of some of our brightest students, and that is truly a fact, and in fact, with all of our students tonight, but these four are certainly no exceptions. These students have demonstrated exceptional academic excellence, perseverance, and dedication to their studies, placing them among the top scholars in the entire nation. The National Merit Scholarship Program is one of the most prestigious academic awards and competitions in the United States, and it recognizes students who have excelled on the PSAT and NMSQT and met rigorous academic and extracurricular standards. This is the number that's staggering. Out of over 1.5 million students who entered the competition, only 15,000 are left, and these are four of those 15,000 in the entire country. I am admittedly not a math person, I'm a history and government teacher, but that is the top 0.01% of students in the country, so I think they deserve a round of applause for that. So tonight, we honor our very own scholars, these four who have reached this remarkable milestone. And so I'm going to read them, I'm going to, we're going to present them now with their certificates. Dr. Hasty, since I don't have Ms. Fein here, would you mind coming and handing them their certificates?
We'd love to, thank you.
First up, I would like to recognize Mr. Benjamin Bakshian. Next, we have Tali Goldcorn. Andrew Smiler, A.J. Smiler. And lastly, she's busy tonight, Sarah Zhang. To our National Merit finalists, congratulations. We celebrate you not only for your hard, your hard work, your exceptional academic achievements, but your dedication, your determination to excellence. And so you serve as an inspiration to your peers and a source of pride for our school, and I say that most truly from the bottom of my heart. You are exceptional students, and you lead by example for the rest of our student body. We are excited to see all of the incredible things that you do in your future. On behalf of the faculty, staff, and administration at the high school, and if I dare to say so, on behalf of the Board of Education and our district cabinet, we congratulate you, and please enjoy the rest of your evening. Congratulations, you four.
Remy?
First off, congratulations, and congratulations to Sarah again. But it's, it's amazing how we have four students at, in the district who, out of, you said 1,500?
15,000 in the country, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a great achievement for our school, and it shows a great honor, and you show what's right about Beverly, and you show, you make our school stand out, and you have a great representation for our school, so thank you so much, and congratulations.
Mr. Stewart?
Not to sound like a broken record, but you guys are just, you know, incredible. Sarah, you might as well just have your own, like, agenda line item, just, it's the Sarah Show. Wow. You know, we all pride ourselves here on trying to make the best, you know, academic environment, and you guys are just the pinnacle of that. So, you know, when everyone talks about where we may or may not be on the academic scale, you guys are showing us exactly where everyone can go. So I just, you know, thank you for that, thank you so much for the effort that you've put in, and you've set the bar, and we hope that we can bring everyone up to where you guys are. So thank you.
Congratulations, you guys are truly exceptional. My only request of you is, in the last couple months of your school year, please reach down to freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and take a minute to let them know what has worked for you and what inspires you. You know, you'll be out the door soon enough, but they would really benefit from having some insight into your experience. I know, if I was a younger classmate, it would have been helpful to me, so I hope you'll take the time to inspire them.
Congratulations, and thank you. Thank you for showing how amazing Beverly Hills School District is, when we have students like you that have succeeded so well. Thank you for your hard work, thank you for who you are, and your integrity and your leadership, and from what Judy said, I, I think that would be amazing, as I do have a freshman, that would be fantastic if you can have that leadership row and, and show them also how wonderful it could be. Thank you so much, and congratulations.
So again, I'll just say, educational excellence, educational excellence, seriously, guys. I mean, for those of you who don't quite understand what this is, we all, a lot of us grew up taking the SATs, so out of all the kids who take the PSAT, which is a sort of a precursor to the SAT, the top 2% to 3% nationally across the country, anyone correct me if I'm wrong, are awarded semifinalists, and then you keep going, and if you've reached the finalist stage, which you mentioned were 15,000 anyway, it really is an incredible feat, and it's not only a tribute to your hard work, your parents' hard work, and also the teachers and the school that has supported you. So thank you and congratulations.
You are superstars. I expect, I'm putting the pressure on, I'm going to see you in Who's Who in America sometime, for some famous thing that you've done, you've contributed in some way to science or to space or what have you, because the pressure is on you, but nonetheless, I have to tell you, it's such a pleasure to see the four of you in front of us, to know that you are the finalists, you've been picked from even the semifinalists, and you're still, I gotta tell you, I'm so proud of you all, and your parents are, I do, I see Mama taking the picture, and, so I'm not putting any pressure on you, but in a few years, I expect to see your names in the news, that you've discovered something, some disease that we could treat about, or we could get rid of, I'm looking forward to that. So good luck, and congratulations to you and your teachers and all of your families, you deserve it. Okay, approval, I would like for an approval of the consent calendar, are we going to be pulling anything from the consent calendar?
Yes, and colleagues correct me if I've missed anything, but I move to approve the consent calendar, other than items 8B1, 8E, and 8H. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Who was the second?
Dr. Stern.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. I'll call for the approval, let's vote on the agenda, and then we'll vote on, pull up the next item.
Okay.
All those in favor of the consent calendar, did I say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have one request, I believe it is to speak, a Mr. Rosoli, on the item that's been pulled, is that correct?
I don't think I see him.
Is he on Zoom? Mr. Rosoli? Michael Rosoli, are you here?
The father. Well, we can always hear him at the end.
Okay, if he's not here yet, we will hear him at the end then, but note, please, that he was called to speak on the item that was pulled, and that we're now, I move a motion to approve item number B.
So, I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar, item number 8B, certificated personnel report, minus lines 70 through 74, but I also did have a couple questions for Dr. Hasty, if that's okay.
Sure, okay, I will second the motion.
Thank you. Dr. Hasty, and maybe Dr. Seaman has something to contribute here, too. I noticed Prop 28 funds being used, and, you know, Prop 28 has been in the news a lot recently, and I know LAUSD is having some allegations there about the use or the misuse of the funds, and, and I'm not that familiar with it because I'm tone deaf, and I turn the music up in the car, but I know that the performing arts are very important to so many of our students and our families. I just wanted to make sure that you all are aware of that matter, and that we're using the prop funds to the T.
You want to speak to the programming, because this is CTE prop funding, the key, with Prop 28 funding for arts, the key piece is supplemental versus supplant, so we do have to do something different, different and new for services that would be related to, it can be arts, it could be music, it could be digital arts in those areas, so there is that supplant rule. And again, I can speak to the rules of it for this specifically. Dr. Seaman, do you want to talk to the CTE piece?
And I can be very direct with my question. From what I read about it, a lot of the prop needs to be used to hire additional, and you know what I'm talking about.
I can speak to that, so we get an allocation of roughly around 370,000 per year based on, there's an algorithm to, or a formula for it. Every year, that, that new allocation goes for a three-year cycle, so every year we get a new one that goes on a three-year cycle. The rule with Prop 28 is that 20% of that can go to things that are not staff, the other 80% has to go to salary and benefits that are instructing, or giving direct instruction for staff. The 20%, for instance, we could bring a contract, we could get supplies, we could get instruments. The challenge that a lot of districts are having, when we talk about LA Unified, is how this, once that three-year, if we don't spend it, and some districts haven't spent some of it, and that's where they're getting in trouble because they didn't know how, especially districts that have robust arts programming at this time, and they already had it, and maybe the foundation helped, you know, so, or maybe the general fund already helped, so they can't supplant. So that's been some of the challenges you're hearing, and a lot of districts are being creative with how they're implementing new programming and reinventing some things.
Thank you, and...
So on our website, too, bhusd.org, and if you go to add services, on the right-hand side, there's a toolbar, and at the very bottom, there's Prop 28. We brought plans just to the Board of Education many moons ago, it seems like, right when we first heard about the funds, and you'll see listed there 20, 23, 24, 24, 25 plans for each of the sites, the way that we worked with the principals on the potential spending of those funds. And again, we received very little, but you'll see that there's plans for each of those over the past two years.
And then what's the vision for next year with the performing arts wing coming online? Are we planning to put more dollars toward it, or since we're not going to have to rent facilities, we'll have more dollars to use? I mean, we were using bond funds for the facilities rental, I just want us to be worthy of the stages that we're going to have, and make sure that our students are going to be set up for success.
Totally, the great part for our theater arts program and any of our visual and performing arts at the high school, not only do we have the Prop 28 funds to be able to support, so we use a lot of the 20% for both of our fall play, our spring musical, we bought new uniforms for our drum line in the fall, but for next year, we also, with the support of working with Cindy Dubin, our career advisor, we also have some CTE funds for our visual and performing arts. our career advisor, we also have some CTE funds for our visual and performing arts. Some of our visual and performing arts teachers have reserved their CTE credentialing. And so we even have, I think that's what Dr. Hasty was mentioning, we also have some CTE funds to go along with our Prop 28 to even make those programs more robust. And then once we open up those facilities, you don't know what you don't have until you've lived in it. And so that'll help us be able to secure those items for those teachers to build out those programs even further.
Thank you. And then is the Spring Musical the Mary Poppins?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Call for the motion on the item. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving right along. Remy, do you have a student report ready for us today? I'm sure you do.
Sorry, Mrs. Marcus. We have two more items, E and H, to discuss.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I did, I deleted that. Thank you. Okay. Next, I make a motion to approve the agreement with Swing Education, Inc., and I just had a couple of questions on that one.
Which one are you calling on, E?
E, yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead. I will second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. So I just wanted to understand when the new substitute program is going to... First of all, thank you guys for working on this. I think it's been a long time where we've been wanting to make sure that when our teachers are out, we have great substitute teachers in the classroom, you know, paving the way while they're gone. I just wanted to double-check on when this is intended to start. Is it ASAP?
So yeah, as soon as, and I'm trying to remember all the details of the contract, as soon as we get a signed contract, there is some introduction to the software and how we have to do it. There will be some training with our internal staff, but not ASAP, but it will start as soon as we execute the contract, the process.
Okay. Last year, Dr. Stern and I were very interested in the substitute situation. And I noticed that in the exhibit, the breakdown is non-credentialed, credentialed, long-term, non-credentialed, long-term, credentialed. Is there an opportunity to work with Swing to further break it down so that we're working with, like, all English teachers are aligned in one charter? So that we're really getting the appropriate teacher for the right spot?
In my negotiations with them, they're very open to flexibility, and we can definitely work on that.
Okay. I just would encourage, sorry, I'm...
No, it's okay. Yeah, I understand.
I just would encourage that kind of specificity. We're working with them, they're a vendor, they want to make us happy. And so why not get the most out of them that we possibly can to customize the, you know, the employer, the contractor for the course or the grade level? We could go down as far as you want.
100% agree.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to say, anytime we bring a contract to board, it is, we are attempting to do our best, we might not be 100%, but I will always ask them how they can do better. If they can, you know, I want to come back to you to say, hey, they said 300 an hour, we got them down to 295. I mean, it's a little bit, but that's part of our job, and we should be negotiating on behalf of the district in that manner.
Thank you so much. I really think that it will be much more effective if the teachers have specific knowledge to a topic or an age group.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I also have a comment. So I wanted to ask you in regards to the substitute teachers also, to piggyback on what Judy was saying. When we do have the substitute teachers, so we'll make sure that they're specific to that classroom, because we do have a lot of issues with when we do have a sub that goes into a specific classroom. They're basically getting babysat, so we don't want that. We want them to continue the curriculum.
I was a substitute teacher, and I worked for an agency.
You were probably fabulous.
But I did it in England.
You did it in England.
So I know this all too well. And I've worked on the other side, where I've been working with multiple agencies to bring in the right sub. Swing Education, again, it's one of many. It's, I vetted this when I heard about it. I met with CBOs throughout the South Bay to make sure, and I got good feedback. And so I want to, and the feedback was, not only are they cost-effective, but they have good quality people. One of the things that gives us a lot of flexibility, they will have people that are properly trained. And if we really want to specialize and push, they will give us a pool. And once we assign them, and again, if it's not working out, we have that flexibility to move on. But my answer to all that is yes, and that's what we strive to do.
Okay, so that was my next question. So if we're not satisfied, they'll give us...
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
My question might be, on the pay scale for these people that are actually hired by them to come in and sub, are they getting approximately the same rate that the teacher, that may be that we're pulling off of our own sub list, getting the same rate of pay?
Yeah, it's a percentage breakdown. There's a table, and I can't remember the page number, but you'll see the percentage breakdown. Thank you, page six. You'll see where it says credentialed, it's the second row, where they took our amount, which, again, that was $250. We had a 42% uptick, and so total is $355. So they're taking a percentage of what we already offer.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, call for the questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Last one, yes. I make a motion for the ratification of purchase order report number 12 for 2024, 2025. Please? Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So the reason why I pulled this is because this board and the prior board, we have been trying to balance the books. And you know, Dr. Hasty, we've been having some robust conversations. In months past, we had been trying to reduce the conference reimbursement expenses. I'm not speaking about our staff teachers who are going through PLCs on campus, and they're having Staff Development Day and so on. I'm speaking more to the off-site conferences and memberships, which we end up, I feel like, every month or every two weeks approving $5,000, $10,000, $15,000 in conference expenses, hotels, meals, and so on. And usually, it's for management and higher. So we've had this conversation in the past, and I just want to raise the issue to you. I know you were not here in the past. But I don't know what is the proper way to say it, but I would, I think we exempted out, like, AXA for Assistant Superintendents and higher. But I think that we need to put almost a moratorium on it until we have a game plan of, well, what are we going to do going forward? I mean, I welcome my colleagues, Dr. Seaman, Dr. Hasty, Mrs. Collins Williams. I welcome everyone's input, but my impression is that it's not something that we're able to have a control of, because it just comes and goes.
Yeah. Well, okay, go ahead, I'll let Dr. Seaman talk first.
So there's two things here, though, that we have to take in consideration is, none of our professional development actually comes out of a general fund. It is both grant-funded. We wrote both a plan for Educators Effectiveness five years ago in that we still have about, I would say, close to a little over $100,000 left for the '25, '26 school year.
Grant money? Sorry to interrupt you.
Correct. Yep, so both, all of our professional development is covered under grants. None of it is coming from our general fund. So when you're approving, say, we go to the Avid Institute to train, that's one that's coming up over the summer, those are all being charged to our Title II funds and our Educators Effectiveness. And our Educators Effectiveness grant plan that's also posted in the Ed Services website, you'll see that it was a five-year plan that we worked together with, at the time, the Board of Education, in addition to the principles of incorporating PLC work, introduction to Avid. So that's where those funds come from. So that, when you see those charges for, say, a hotel room for a PLC institute, that is coming out of our Title II and our Educators Effectiveness grant funds.
So thank you for the clarification. How can we know so that we're like, okay, those are grant funds, we should be spending those dollars? For example, I see fund, sub fund, and it says 1.0. So how do I know that the origin of those dollars is essentially free money?
I would defer to Dr. Hasty's or Mary Lou.
Mary Lou, do you want to come up here and answer?
Sure.
Yeah. And then I don't have to stop you next time, because I can know that this is...
I'll let Mary Lou prep for that question, but I...
Money that's meant to be spent, exactly.
But I'm going to echo, we, well, I won't say echo. I want to get something clear. The focus is on instruction, and we got to also consider and acknowledge how the board feels. I get the costs. But also, I'm going to acknowledge that, are we pulling staff out of sites? And so that's something that we need to talk about and work on, and we'll get a clear picture for you, but, Mary Lou?
I just want to echo what Dr. Seaman said. Everything that's restricted funds for professional development for educators, it all has to have a plan, and it all goes to the state or the federal government, whoever is giving us those funds. And the way that you would know, I would reference the resource. The resource codes give us the different grants and allocations. And so I'm happy to share a chart of accounts with you all.
Oh, thank you.
And that's sort of a dictionary that would define what those resources mean and which pot of money we're using.
Thank you. Then we can connect the dots for ourselves.
That's exactly it. And so what I can do is, I'll work with Mary Lou. We can put together a memo for you guys that you can report on on a later date. And again, when we talk, we don't want to have a budget workshop yet, but you're looking at a fund which is 1.0. And as Mary Lou said, the resource does define the actual, where the money is and what type of money it is. So something we can learn, and we'll work on together.
Thank you so much, yes.
And also, just as another measure is, before the end of the school year, we can also come back to you as Ed Services or Superintendent to be able to present what was in the plan for the final year of that spending. So that way, you also know the buckets that that cash kind of falls into, PLC institutes, Avid Institute, those things that are necessary for us to be able to continue on in those programs. So that way, you'll see where they're going, what it's for, and how is part of that plan.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, Remy, it's your turn.
Okay. So, last time I presented, I showed you all of our February events. And so far, we've already gotten three out of the way. We've had BHHS Spirit Week that just passed, the pep rally that just passed, which I'll show some pictures of soon. And we had Silent Disco, which was last Friday. And if you don't recall, it's, basically, there were snacks, drinks, and every guest was provided with a set of headphones that they could use at either three, any three of the DJs' sets they wanted and can listen to the music the DJ was playing. And it was a great experience for all. I'll show some pictures of those as well. We also have Color Wars that had to be postponed because of swim gym techni- technical difficulties. And we have the talent show coming up on March 24th, and we have our Stafford Seniors Basketball Game that's going to be now moved to the upper gym, and it's going to be taking place tomorrow during lunch. So here's a photo of the pep rally. Some games we played was Finish the Lyric, which our principal, Mr. Stewart, was a part of. And then we also played Family Feud with the students. Versus, it was the captains, the boys' captains versus the girls' captains on any of the spring sports. Yeah. And here's some photos of our Silent Disco with a bunch of students having fun and enjoying the dance. And it was a great way to get students involved, because this is the first year we don't have a winter formal at our school. So it's just a great way that we had a different type of dancing event that everyone was able to enjoy and come in their cozy pajamas. And it wasn't an event that was semi-formal or formal. People were encouraged to come in their pajamas, their PJs, and just dress and have fun and to have a good time. Oh, sorry. Sorry, no, no, that's my fault. Here, here are the photos. We also had the College and Career Center Job Fair, where students were encouraged to bring resumes and from these various different companies that were offering jobs, they could give their resume to them, and then they would get back and let them know if there's a job opening for them and if they're the right fit, that they should come get the job. And just a great experience for all those students who were able to go and take the opportunity to try out this system we have at our school. And it's an opportunity for those students to get in the world and get in the field and see what they like and discover what they are interested in doing. Beverly Hills High School's Theater presents The Importance of Being Earnest. It's a trivial comedy for serious people by Oscar Wilde. And it's on February 27th, the 28th, and March 1st at 7:00 PM.
Can I just stop you on that? I have to tell you, I saw that listed last week, and I made amazing. I mean, first time, not going to miss that. It is the most comical Wilde, that Oscar Wilde. It's absolutely farcical, it's absolutely terrific, it's funny. If you have a chance, go and see it, it'll be wonderful. I just can't wait to see it. I'm going Thursday night. It's the first night that it's there, and it'll be wonderful. So I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just need to put in a plug for this particular comedy.
And it's also going to be located at BHHS in room S205. And like we already heard tonight, our BHHS Acadeca advances to state. And this is the fifth consecutive year that this, our team is heading to the California State Competition after placing fifth overall in the Laco Regional Competition. And their hard work, resilience, and pursuit of excellence embody what it means to make each day well-lived. We also had the BHHS Science Olympiad, and here are some photos from that. It was a big, huge event with many participants involved. And there was also the Science Fair, Arodeo and Horseman. And some more photos. There were also awards for perfect attendance at the Husky High Five and I Ready to, I believe, Kinder, First, Fourth, and Fifth Graders. And just acknowledging those students for what they're doing and their achievements and making sure they feel recognized for what they're doing. And here's some photos of some of the Horseman students celebrating Valentine's Day. And that's all, thank you.
Mr. Stewart, any comment?
Can I hire you to make my PowerPoints? Obviously, Mrs. Marcus, I wanted to congratulate you on your incredible judging skills at the Science Fair. I was here with my daughter. No, she showed no favoritism whatsoever. You know, and just, you know, I love, you love that we just have so many arts programs going on. I would love to attend with you to that play comedy. It looks amazing.
Not to be missed.
Not to be missed, yes, absolutely. And I also just cannot wait until, what is it, July 30th, when our new theater opens at Beverly Hills High School? It's on the, God willing. Yes, so...
We're putting, we're saying, end of summer.
End of summer.
Don't hold us to it.
Yeah, I didn't mean to put a date on it, but just, you know, so many incredible things are to come, and I cannot wait to see our first show and performance in that brand-new building, so.
No comment. Just thank you so much for capturing all of the amazingness. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Remy. I love seeing your report, and thank you for keeping us updated. Thank you.
No other comments, just thank you.
You know, I always look forward to what you're going to say, and they're always, you're right on, and so on top of everything that's going on. It really keeps us informed, and thank you so much, Remy. Okay, it looks like we are ready for the mid-year LA cap and the strategic plan.
Good evening. I'm gonna, I'm gonna introduce this one. So, good evening, President Marcus, board members, staff, students, and members of the Beverly Hills community. Before we start with the strategic plan presentation, I want to begin tonight by introducing myself in a way that allows you to truly understand who I am as an educator, a leader, and someone who is deeply committed to the success of this district. First, I have dedicated my entire career to improving schools. Ensuring student success and leading transformational change. I know, I, I bring a diverse set of experiences that have shaped my leadership. From being a high school teacher, football coach, to Division One college football player. Where I have learned the value of discipline, teamwork, and perseverance. Throughout my career as a teacher, school leader, and district leader, I have successfully taken on many challenging roles. I was a teacher both here in LA County for over, and overseas, which I mentioned earlier, for nearly 10 years. I've been a school site leader where I managed curriculum adoptions, supported teachers, and instructional leadership, and created safe, engaging, rigorous environments where students could thrive. I've worked closely with counselors, leading district-wide initiatives to ensure all students have a proper academic and social, and social emotional supports to help, help them be successful in the classroom. Under my leadership, I, I led a school to achieve the distinction of being the number one art school, both public and private in the nation. I've led diversity initiatives that focused not only on inclusion, but also on merit-based excellence. Ensuring that all students have access to opportunity while maintaining standards, high standards and rigor. Also, as an HR leader, I've had crucial conversations, made difficult decisions. I have led investigations, and I've dealt firsthand with employee relations. All in an effort to protect the integrity of schools and the safety of education of children. We can do this. We will do this. And I say we because this is not about one leader, it's about all of us. The team we have, like me, has the ability, the passion, and the drive to execute our district's strategic plan and vision with precision and purpose, ensuring that every student in BHUSD has the opportunities, opportunity to thrive and succeed. But I will not be doing this work alone. Please know that we have an exceptional team of leaders, educators, and staff who have the capacity, vision, and expertise to take our district into a new era of excellence. An era where every student has the opportunities, resources, and support to achieve their full potential. That is why tonight's strategic plan is so important. This is our roadmap. It is how we ensure that every decision we make is aligned with our goals, supports student success, and creates a culture of accountability, transparency, and results. The strategic, the strategic plan and the LCAP are not separate initiatives. They work together to ensure that our district is meeting the needs of all students while maintaining financial sustainability and programmatic excellence. This plan will give us the structure, and it is giving us the structure and direction to move forward with confidence, even, even during times of transition. Transitions bring uncertainty, but they also bring opportunity. This is our moment to unite as a community, as a staff, as a leadership team, and fully commit to the plan that will shape the future of our district. I do, at this point, want to express my sincere gratitude to the Board of Education for your guidance, your bravery, and support to our teachers and staff for your unwavering commitment to our students and to our families and community partners who invest so much in this district. I especially want to thank Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Dr. Dustin Seaman, for his leadership in driving this important work forward. And of course, Laura Collin Williams. Tonight, Dr. Seaman will lead this presentation with additional contributions from our instructional leaders. Also know that this will be part one. I'll be bringing back part two, that will talk more about the non-instructional content as related to business services, maintenance operations, construction, nutrition, and safety. Dr. Seaman, I turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Hasty. I would like to welcome our principals up first. Principal Elery will actually lead us in through Horseman. We'll go to Principal Kiper, then to Principal Waters, then to Principal Stewart. We will pause in between each of the schools, so that way it'll provide the Board the opportunity to be able to ask each of the principals any specific site, specific questions around their strategic plan and their goals. In addition, if you are watching from the community, you'll also see an additional attachment which states the LCAP. If you recall the work that we do here, our strategic plan is more robust than what is required by the state for our reporting purposes. So you'll see that the LCAP is what is required for the state and our county level. But you'll see in our strategic plan, our goals are, have additional action plans. So we expect more out of ourselves than what is expected by the county and the state. So that being said, I'm going to hand it over. Welcome.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Hasty, thank you for having me. I am here tonight to share the progress that we've made at Horseman in the implementation of our strategic plan. Our goals of excellence are in three areas: engaging students in learning, supporting positive student behavior, and growing and developing professionally. I'm really excited to be able to report to you that all of the action items listed here are well in progress. Some of the areas were even making greater progress than I would have anticipated for this point in the school year. Our data chats have been revised so that we're not just chatting about data, but we're also chatting about how will this data directly impact our instructional program in every classroom across the grade level. Our teachers are receiving the cognitive guided instruction, professional development that we spoke about at the beginning of the year. Our tiered interventions are now more aligned with the core instructional delivery that happens in the classroom. We are thriving and progressing with our PBIS implementation. I was thrilled to see that Horseman won the attendance for January. So we're making progress with attendance. And our PLC work is one of those areas that I spoke about where the progress is even better than I would have anticipated it being at this point in the school year. So the first goal that I want to speak about in a little bit more detail is engaging students in learning. One of the most significant markers that we use to monitor progress in our students' achievement and in their mastery of grade level standards is in the I Ready Diagnostic Assessments. So the I Ready program is a computer-based program that helps our students make progress in mastering grade level standards. We give a diagnostic assessment three times a year. We gave one in August. We shared that data with you when we first shared the strategic plan. And we also gave them their second diagnostic in December. So I'd like to share that data with you now. Okay, so this is, these are our results in reading. The green bars are the percentage of students that are at or above grade level. The yellow bar are the students that are just below grade level. We call them our bubble students because they are rising, but they just got to make that little, that little burst to start getting to where they need to be. And then the red bar are the students that are below grade level or far below grade level. So as you can see, this is the growth report for reading. Diagnostic one, 46% of our students were at or above grade level. When we gave them the second assessment in December, that number increased to 66%, which we're very proud of. Just below was 43% of our student population in August. In December, that number decreased to 28%. And most of those students you can see went from the just below band into the at or above grade level band. And we went from 11% of our students being below grade level to 8% of our students. This, this is school-wide data in reading. This is the grade level breakdown. And you can see from Kinder to fifth grade, there was significant progress. Okay, in math, at the first diagnostic, for the first diagnostic assessment, we saw that 37% of our students were at or above grade level. That number grew to 57% in December with the second diagnostic assessment. 52% of our students were just below. That number decreased to 38%. 12% of our students were below grade level in math, and that number decreased to 5%. So while we're still, this, this data is consistent with our 2024 CASP data where we did better in language arts than we did in math. This is consistent with that data, you'll notice. But what I am encouraged by is that it was a 20-point increase in both areas, which shows that we're making progress in both subject areas. There can be a tendency to make, to focus on one area and really do well in that subject. And then the other subject suffers a bit. So I'm encouraged to see that we're making the same level of progress in both math and language arts. And this is our grade level breakdown. You can see that every grade level made significant progress in math. Okay, so what are we doing to achieve these results and to continue to do better? I wanted to share, because we shared it with you before, what's happening with I Ready. In addition to the assessments, students also have the opportunity to be assigned lessons that meets them where they're at. So whatever skills they need to work on, the teacher is able to assign lessons through I Ready, so that each student is on an individual pathway towards mastering grade level standards by the end of the year. So this data shows that 95% of our students are passing their math lessons, and 86% are passing their reading lessons. Time on task, I wanted to share with you because it comes up. It comes up in our tours. And I know it's come up in this room about how much time are students spending on the computer? Well, our time on task for I Ready is one hour and 18 minutes per week. That's the average. 45 minutes of that hour and 18 minutes is in the classroom, so anything beyond that is what's happening at home. As I said before, our data chats have been reimagined to be more about instructional delivery, using the data for the teachers to come together to talk about what are we going to do in our classrooms as a result of this data or in response to this data. We are now focusing much more on essential standards. There's 40 standards, 40 to 50 for each grade level, for each subject. So there's 40 language arts standards. There's 40 to 50 math standards. It can be very overwhelming for teachers to try to teach all of those standards to mastery by the end of April. So our teachers this year have come together to identify what are the essential standards? What are the standards that every student must master in order for them to be successful in the next grade level? Those are the standards that we're going to sit and unpack together, that we're going to take as much time as needed to teach. If it takes three weeks, four weeks, five weeks for that standard, it's going to be all hands on deck. Our intervention teachers are now coming together to provide that extra support in the essential standards. So if third grade is working on, students will be able to answer who, what, where, why questions. While that standard is being taught in the classroom, students are being pulled for intervention. The intervention teacher is working on that same essential standard. Our EL teacher is providing language support that supports the instruction of that essential standard. So it's basically, these are the standards that are all hands on deck. We're also creating our common assessments around our essential standards. That means that teachers are going to teach a skill for a certain period of time, four or five days. And then they all give the same assessment on that grade level. They come back to their PLC. They discuss how well did our students do? The students that didn't do well, what are we going to do for them? The students that did do well, what extension lessons are we going to provide for them? So common assessments is something that we're really focusing on this year. We're also catching up to Elro Dale with assessing reading fluency. That's now happening first through fifth grade. So moving on to supporting positive student behavior, this slide you're well familiar with. We shared a lot of this with you in our first two presentations on the strategic plan. And you saw an amazing presentation a few weeks ago. So I'm not going to spend too much time talking about this, but I did want to share the new elements to our supporting positive student behavior. And we've added a few elements to our PBIS implementation. We now have a check-in, check-out system where students who need a little bit more support, the what we're, what we're doing in the classroom and school-wide is not quite working for them. They're, they're being referred to the office more than we'd like them to be, the ones that are struggling a bit. The PBIS team has a list of who those students are. And though, each one of those students is being provided with a mentor. The student selects the mentor, and it can be any adult on campus. It can be a classified staff member, an administrator, a teacher. The student picks their top three. And then our check-in, check-out coordinator connects with those three adults and says, this student really sees you as a mentor. Are you willing to be the mentor to this student? And then that student checks in with their mentor every day to get that encouragement and to, just to have someone to, to talk to. And, and we usually like for the mentor not to be someone that is in a position of authority where they're giving out discipline to the student. So we want the mentor to be like a safe space on the campus. We also have added parent and classified participation on our PBIS team. Our classified representation is usually playground aid because they work directly with students and in situations where students are on the playground, and they're making a lot of choices. We've also expanded the behavior supports that we provide in the classroom. We have, each teacher has a calm down kit that's, has books. It has strategies for kids that need it. So we've kind of been adding to that and updating it. And as Remy talked about, we've also started to recognize our students in award ceremonies. So we've done one, our first semester awards, and we'll do another round at the end of the second semester. Okay, and then growing and developing professionally, as I spoke about, we're making great progress with our PLCs. Our teachers have the opportunity to meet five times a week. Once a week, they must meet in their PLC. And we've, we've talked extensively this year about the difference between a grade level meeting and a PLC meeting. Grade level meeting is discussed, to discuss grade level business. PLC is to talk about what do we want students to learn? That's a discussion of standards. How do we know when they've learned it? That's developing our common assessments. What will we do for students who didn't learn it? That's where our RTI teachers can come in and provide feedback and support. And what do we do for students that did learn it? Because we have that intervention time every single day, we really want to focus on what are we doing with the kids who stay in the room? Those are the kids that are at or above grade level. And then our professional development is directly tied to everything that I've just discussed. We, we, I'm very proud to say that everything we learned at the PLC and RTI conference was brought back to campus, and we are fully implementing the things that we, we learned there. We're also continuing with our CGI teacher-led training. Dr. Seaman led a wonderful professional development for both schools, Elro Dale and Horseman today. Our second and third grade teachers got to collaborate and watch each other teach lessons, so that's going along. And then we're providing professional development in fluency as well. And then we're providing professional development in fluency as well as common assessments. And our teacher leaders, who are piloting the two math programs, are also receiving professional development in our two, the two math curriculums that we are piloting at this time. So that concludes my update.
Okay, well, we'll start around. Remy, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to say, like, the at or above grade level scores on the, for the math and English on the iReady, it's, it's amazing. It's unbelievable how high, especially kindergarten gone, went from eighteen percent to fifty-nine percent is unfathomable.
It's incredible.
It's incredible, yeah. It's, so just great job with everything you're doing, and I hope it just seem like going higher and higher every time.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Mr. Stewart.
I'll keep it short. Just congratulations on such a meteoric rise in such a short period of time. Just, I mean, absolutely fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. The teachers are working very hard.
Mrs. Manicherry.
Hi there.
Hi.
Congratulations again. As usual, Remy hits the nail on the head in the first statement. Congratulations truly are in order for you and your whole team. Thank you for what you're doing for our students. I appreciate you. What, what do you do with, like, for example, your third grade in reading is, you know, so far above the rest? They all have astronomical improvement. But what do you do with that grade and those teachers? Are you honing in on them, and then are you starting to have cross-grade level meetings so that those teachers are able to share with best practices with the others? How are you really capitalizing on that shining star?
So what's incredible about our third grade team, I shared this with the parents at our PAC meeting, is they're an example of what happens when teachers collaborate, when they're in lockstep, when they share resources, when they plan together, when they give the same common assessments. Third grade has been doing that work. And so they're kind of like our beacon of light. But they show that when excellent practices are happening in every classroom, not just the one or two teachers, that's when you see scores like that. And so we're trying to spread that around, that we're, we're, every grade level's a team, and no one's an island, and we've got to plan together, and we've got to make progress together. So I believe this can happen at every grade level.
Yeah, I do too. Thank you. Two more questions. My first is in regard to your fifth, which is doing a lot better than before, but is still a little soft. Is there anything that we as a board can be doing to support those fifth graders before we send them off to the middle school? Or is it just that you're going to keep putting your head down with your teachers and make sure they get there in the next? You've still got a quarter to go.
We do.
Yeah.
I think we're going to see something different with fifth grade at Horace Mann this year in terms of our results, because this honestly is the first time that they're not just able to do what they think is best in their classroom, where they're being asked to come together and plan together and unpack standards together and give common assessments. This is the first time they're really doing that work. So I'm hoping that we'll see great progress this year and even more next year.
Thank you. Can you tell us more about what time on task means, and how are you managing that so that the tech is not doing the work, the tech is doing the assessing? That's my interpretation of your hour and eighteen minutes math, hour and sixteen minutes reading. It's, it's really finite and, and a small portion of the day. So is, is that something that's coming from you and you're sharing with them that this is your expectation, that this would be the limit, or?
It is, but the teachers at Horace Mann are fine with that. They, they don't really love the idea of the kids being on their, their devices for significant periods of time. It's just, I can't, I can't emphasize enough that for the student to get lessons that are specifically tailored to their issues, their deficits, their challenges, it's really hard to do that for twenty-five kids as a teacher. So to be able to assign each student something that they need to work on right now today, it, it is invaluable, but we, we really try to minimize it and use it for what it's meant to be used for.
Yeah, I hear you. It's, it's custom and it's valuable. I get you. But I really appreciate that. It's also minimal.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are you saying that time on tasks, excuse me for just asking, is time on computers then?
The time on iReady, yes.
Per week?
Per week.
Yeah.
Oh, per week? So if you divide that by five, it's really twenty minutes or twenty, twenty-five to thirty minutes a day.
It's forty minutes a week for each subject area. So anything over that, they're doing at home.
Bravo, Mrs. Ellerby. Thank you.
I'm not married, Judy.
I'm not married every day of the week either. Thank you, Ms. Ellerby.
Thank you, Ms. Manicherry.
Ms., Dr. Stern.
I'll come back.
I'll come back to you.
All right, well, thank you. Wonderful to see these results. A couple of questions, going back to the behavior. So I love PBIS, you know, obviously trying to incentivize kids to act appropriately according to positive behavioral cognitive things. But just, I just wanted to know, would you, could you estimate like how many behavior referrals there were over the past year, like since the fall? Like, have there been, you know, incidents that lent themselves to like beyond just, okay, doing, you know, a reflection sheet or, you know, having to go to the office or?
I would say five students a day maybe are referred to the office.
Per day?
Yes.
And in general, what are those, what are the misbehaviors or?
Usually getting into arguments on the playground or being annoying and being disruptive in class.
Okay.
That's where that usually comes from. Not following directions.
Right.
Being a little defiant. So they usually want us to have a conversation about making better choices.
Okay, and, and you're finding that the same five kids are coming in, or would you say it's across the board?
There's some usual suspects, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Yeah, I understand that. Usual suspects. Let's see, what else was I going to ask you? So tell us more about the writing. I know it's harder to measure that because iReady is more, you know, it does, does a really good job with the math and the reading, but like in terms of like the curriculum-based tasks and things that are going on in the class, what are you seeing in terms of the improvement?
I would say that's one of the weaker components of our instructional delivery at this time. Principal Kbar and I have been in discussions with Dr. Seaman about really bringing in a great writing program next year and giving us the summer to kind of learn that program and get trained ourselves so that we can really fully implement it school-wide next year. And that is something, that's the one thing teachers are actually asking for, is professional development in writing.
In writing, yeah. I mean, it's great that the reading is good because good readers make good writers, and I know that. So, you know, part of the, part of that is already in place, so thank you.
So I wanted, first of all, thank you. I, I, you know, we see how much the, they've improved, which is amazing. And I wanted to ask you about the check-ins and the mentor. How, how is that working out? So basically, if you can explain it a little bit, when they do the check-ins?
So they are supposed to meet with their mentor every morning for that little bit of encouragement for the day, and then meet with them at the end of the day to get the high five, that you did great, you know, there were no issues today. And then whatever little treat incentive the mentor and the student have come up with, we try to work that in as well, that if you've gone a couple of days without any incidents, your mentor rewards you in some way. But we try to make the reward something the mentor and the student kind of agree on so that it's something that's, that's motivating to that particular child.
Okay.
And then we have a coordinator who oversees all of it.
Okay, so basically, they'll, can you give me an example, like if the student is disruptive in class, is that the reason they do the check-ins?
No, it's a student that has habitual behavioral challenges, someone that, our normal husky high five, our lessons, and the things that we do for most kids are just not working for those kids. They're constantly in the office, they're always getting in trouble. So it's like, what can we do to support them? So it's not just them having negative interactions with adults on the campus, but fostering positive relationships with adults.
And is it working?
It is.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. I mean, there's, there are a few students that aren't checking in with their mentor, and so at our last PBIS meeting, we talked about that, finding out why. So maybe check-in, check-out doesn't work for every student. Maybe there are some kids who don't want that level of attention. So we're, we're looking into that now, why it's not working for all of them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, I want to tell you that I am very impressed by the improvement from the first test scores of iReady to the second. It's really amazing how much the kids have improved. I, I wonder how much of that is the fact that they're coming back from vacation and their minds have been on vacation, and then all of a sudden they start to get busy and get down to task, and they really put themselves to it. So I think that that's great. I would hope that there might be some way at some time where kids can have a chance to come before school and start to get ready. I mean, just a little, to help them get up to speed, that maybe those beginning scores would be a little bit higher than they are, but the improvement from the first score to the second score is amazing. Also, I'd like to mention that I hope that they'll be even, that the, the middle one and the, the yellow and the red will go down even more on the third test trial.
Yes.
That's what I'm looking for.
Hopefully.
That we like to see the green go up, but it's nice to see the yellow and the red go down, and I think it will. I, I have, I have some concern about the time on task again. I, that's, can you explain that again? Because I think if you're referring to computers, at what grade level you're talking about that they're on task, in the lower grades like kindergarten and first grade, I hope those numbers don't, I think that's a lot.
It's an average for the whole school, so I'd have to break it down by grade level.
Oh, okay, that, because that's confusing to me that parents will see that and see that the child that maybe in fifth, even though it's an average, and it's, we don't know which is the low, you know, the low end as far as how much time they really have at kindergarten or at first grade as compared to fifth grade because it's an average. So I think it should be broken down by grade level.
Okay.
I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
I guess, I just want to thank you for that very clear report. It was really marvelous, easy to understand, and I really congratulate you on the progress that the school has made so far, and look forward to the, the last set of numbers, which will really, I'm sure, be much even higher, especially those that exceed, are at or exceed grade level.
We will not disappoint you, Ms. Marcus, I promise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'd like to introduce Principal Kbar for Elrodale.
Hello, good evening. Hi, Dr. Hasty and board members. Thank you for having me. I am excited to share our mid-year strategic plan. This is like totally my jam, so happy to talk about this with you. There's three components, just like Ms. Ellerby spoke about, engaging students and learning, supporting positive student behaviors, and growing and developing professionally. And I'm hoping, hoping that I'm able to show you through our slides that the work with growing and developing professionally and all of the professional development that our teachers are going through, all the work connected to Danielson and connected to PLCs has really reflected in classrooms and has come back to show some real growth in our classrooms. So here we go. This is our engaging students and learning. I, Ms. Ellerby and I didn't speak about it before, but I also talked about time on task. Mine says seven hours and twenty-seven minutes. That's for the year. So I did it at day one hundred and fifteen, so you would have to see that our students on average, instead of a week basis, I did it for the entire school year. So my numbers just look different than hers. And I'm happy to come back to you with more comparable numbers so you see what those look like. And that's about talking about iReady work. And our students also from the, the whole first semester, we spoke in November, and I had numbers for you, so now we have a whole semester until mid-February. We have ninety-one percent of our math lessons are passed, and eighty-five percent in our reading are passed. And so some of that is, I think, indicative of the work that we've... Your slides don't match mine. I'm sorry. Do you want them now? Do you want me to go back? They're just empty, right? Sorry. Sorry, sorry. They're just, yours are just blank.
Our numbers are different.
Yeah, like for example, for iReady, past lesson math, this says ninety-six, and then eighty-five is...
This is correct. I'm so sorry. This is updated.
For time on task, this says math, three hours and thirty-two minutes, reading, three hours, forty minutes.
Yes, that's from the November work. This is like since the entire time. So includes all of November and comes back. So it's not seven hours since I saw you in November, it's total, so that's through it. So when we met in November, those were our November numbers. Sorry, you pulled my presentation too soon. It's totally my fault. This is correct. I'm, I apologize. And the way that I did it was to pull all of it so you could see like cumulatively when we met in November for that first part, it was three hours. So I wanted to also talk about our DRA work. That stands for developmental reading assessment. All of our students, first through fourth grade, every student is assessed on a reading assessment. That's one-to-one with a teacher and a student as part of our standards. Our teachers are hearing that fluency, and there's a comprehension component. It begins at the end of kindergarten. Every teacher, every student gets assessed at the end of kindergarten, and there's a fluid number that goes all the way through. So if you were familiar with where a student would be in that scoring guide, you would be able to understand that, oh, that student is at a kindergarten level even though they're in second grade if I gave you a number score. That helps us when we talk about supporting students who are above or below grade level so that we can have that common conversation, and it's one more data point with DRA. So at this point, sixty-seven percent of our total students are at proficiency where they need to be for the year, meaning like they're already have met grade level standards even though they have much more time to do that. And ninety-six percent of our students made growth. So we're targeting in on, on where those small four percent of students in all of those grades have not. The same is true of FACS-wise. FACS-wise is a very strategic way of teaching students the basic memorization or understanding of addition and subtraction and memorizing those facts. And we talk about being able to pull numbers apart and putting them back together. Again, we do really first and second grade with ten goals in FACS-wise, and it's something that we speak about pretty fluently when we talk about a student and we can say what goal number that they're at. Our FACS-wise growth was that ninety, ninety percent of our students in first and second grade have made growth in their FACS-wise. I'm really proud of that. We had our second rounds of data chats. We were really, have taken the work that we've done in PLC to talk about common assessments and common language, sort of like what Ms. Ellerby spoke about with essential standards and talking about the same standard and the same SMART goal, then coming back to look at that work. And we do it in a full data chat. We did a second one in January, but really our PLC work is happening, it, it looks like a mini-data chat every single week, and I'm really proud of that work that's happening across grades. And we're redefining what it looks like to serve students in intervention in those three tiers and how to support students. What's next? Okay, so this is our overall placement in math. I did math first for iReady. You can see our growth broken down into three parts. Tier one means that they're at or above grade level, or fifty-six percent, grew up from thirty-four percent. And when we break it down by grade level, I really want to point out fourth grade with how much progress they've made in terms of their growth and how much of their bar. So while the previous slide broke it down into three parts...
Hard to read.
It is hard to read. It's, but I mean, there's a next slide. It is hard to read only because the other one is lighter. That's how, that's how the system shows it to us, is that like the earlier score. And then I, Ms. Ellerby showed me how to, how she did this, so I also put it into a bar graph about at or above grade level in math. And you can see, again, that's where you can see fourth grade made huge progress. In reading, we're also making progress up to 62% proficiency from 40. And this is a place where I'd love to shout out second grade. They had a huge amount of students that were two or more grade levels below, really hitting a kindergarten level and very few students who were in, at grade level, really like very few. And they have so, they have made so much progress here. You can see that in this next slide also. Second grade, although they're not the highest, they made huge growth from 22% to 56%. This is just the green. So if you look back here at this, it's showing you all three colors, or green, yellow, red. And the next slide is just the green from the first to the second diagnostic. We, we're here to present about PBIS just a few weeks ago, and so I want to talk a little bit more about this. The very small pyramid that has like the up and down in it, that one, we've been talking about the most in our school about how we need, the green at the bottom represents proficiency. The yellow is a tier two, needing some support to be proficient. And a top red needs a lot of support to be proficient and needs a lot of support to access things. That little tiny one talks about an individual person, any individual student, might be all over the tiers in all the different things that they need to hit during the day. So in math, they might be in a tier one, and in reading, they might be in tier three. In interacting with friends, they might be in a tier three, the very top needing a ton of support. But their writing might be in a, in a tier one, needing no support. So that is one of the places that we're talking about. We're not talking about students are, oh, this is a tier one student, or this is a tier three student that needs lots of support. This is a student who might need support in a specific area. And how are we making sure that support happens? One of the things that we've implemented since we were here in November is PBIS training for our playground staff. They have a weekly training session with the administration and with parent instructional coach to make sure that they understand what we're expecting them to do on the playground. We have ways to have our teachers reach out for some help. Any request for assistance can be done very easily. We have people that are checking that form all the time, just in case people aren't seeing each other in the hallways. We've proud to say that we've hit a new TFI score. Tiered fidelity index is the way that we rate ourselves. And as of our last rating, just a few weeks ago, we've hit proficiency in all of the first and second tier. So we're ready to go. That means a lot to Mrs. Collins-Williams, but I'm not sure. It's good, it's good things. Very happy about that. And we are kicking off our attendance campaign, our students are excited. Our overall ADA was 95.3%, but we did see that we were the lowest in January, but we expect to be very, much higher in February. We've already started talking about that. Our new pieces that we've added also is our behavior academies, similar to what Ms. Ellerby was talking about, as we have students that we look at in terms of behavior referral forms and needing some support behaviorally. We've grabbed students that have common needs in their behavior challenges and like given some real direct instruction about how to do that. That is something that's, that our staff learned when they attended a Solution Tree conference. I learned how to provide that support. Mr. Weddell is taking one of the leads in that, as well as like other classroom teachers that are taking on some of that. We have a check-in, check-out process. Some of the daily progress reports and self-monitoring are up here for you to see, that it's like really a grab-and-go sort of piece, so that when we're ready to help. There shouldn't be any barriers to helping students. It shouldn't be that I don't know how to make a sheet or I'm not sure how to do it. And then this is my final slide, which is talking about all of the growth and professional development that we're having. So we have grade level times that are common, prep times for all of our grade levels. Every grade level meets during that time. They found that it wasn't enough time to meet. It just doesn't, it didn't have the pictures, right? All the words are the same, correct? It just didn't have the pictures. Okay, I'm sorry, the picture, it's just the pictures, sorry. Clearly it was. So the, the information there is, oh, sorry, I think I lost. Oh, so we are meeting twice a week now. The teachers asked for more time to work with their collaborative teams to meet on their SMART goals. And so they're taking some of that Wednesday morning time to spend time on our SMART goals. One of the things that we're committed to is some common time together and some common new learning that's happening every single week in two ways. One is the ongoing work around Danielson and PLCs. Some of that is about the cognitively-guided instruction, which we've seen really infused into classrooms. And we've spent so, we've spent all of this year, all of last year, really working on that and the math instruction. And we see it in our classrooms, so we need to spend less time on that. And as a staff, we, people ask to start talking about reading instruction and science of reading. So you see like a rope down there, we're sort of going through the pieces of Scarsborough's Rope, which is the way that reading is broken down into eight different pieces. And we're learning it together, not, not for anything else, but like how does reading work? How does like the learning around reading work? And then where is that reading in our standards? So we're spending that time in our professional learning communities, talking about reading standards. And then going back in, it may or may not be the SMART goals that they've chosen to work on. That is everything. My apologies to you that your slides are not the same.
I just wanted to say congratulations as well, and great job with all the scores going up. But something like Ms. Manny Cherry said, how the fifth graders, I see like it's not as much as a big of an increase. At least I'm looking for the ELA one. It's only 7%, which is still good that we're getting an increase. But I think it'd be really beneficial to also focus a lot on that, because that still means almost 40% are not at the grade level, or not above it at least. So, and also in the big transition going into the middle school, it's going to be a lot more different. You're going to be leaving them, they're going to get a different type of involvement of the way they're going to learn and the way they're gonna, the new students, they're going to be with the seventh and eighth graders at that point. So, but overall, just, it's great to see all our numbers are going up and none of them are going down, thankfully. But so congratulations, a great job, keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much again for your presentation. I'm going to be a little selfish here because I do have a first grader. I just would like to ask, what do you think you attribute the, the numbers in the first grade across each one of the slides? Because we seem like we have quite a bit of a drop-off from kindergarten.
Yeah.
Across the board. And what do you think that that kind of main piece is?
I think that they're missing something when they're coming in. So I don't, I can't, I'm not really sure about what's the difference. But clearly, the test is different between what they're asking at the end of kindergarten and what they're asking at the beginning of first grade. But the first graders seem to be missing some of the foundational skills around reading that we know for sure. And.
I agree.
And some of that, like our kindergarten team in response to that has added on more and more to talk about hegemony, which is like phonemic awareness and like pulling out the auditory piece of that, which is part of why we went to Scarsborough's Rope to say, what are we missing here? Like, what are the reading components when we see a first or second grader? Like, if you look at the language arts slide, we're also seeing that in second grade, right? Like, look at the second graders, they were at 22% coming in. There was like a reading gap there, like they couldn't read something. And so not only could they not comprehend it, so we have to really go back beyond our current standards, go to the standards before and assess that. So kindergarten does a really good job of breaking apart all of like the identification of like, what are the letters, do the students know the letters? Do they know their sounds? Do they know sight words? Do they know their vowel sounds? Can they identify the blends, all of that? And then first grade has sort of joined that and taken, especially this year, hey, what do we know from them coming out of kindergarten and how do we add on our standards? And it takes a lot of time to assess that. I want to thank Dr. Seaman and all of you. Like, we now have access to a platform called ESGI, which you've sort of heard of before. First and second grade teachers have asked to use this platform. We've used it mostly in TK and kindergarten to, it just runs the assessment. You have to do it individually and, and look at it with another person. But it's, makes it more accessible to the staff to use it on technology. The kids are not using, it's not individual. But the first and second grade teachers have taken on that piece and like broken things down. Also, the work of PLCs to say like, oh, our kids can't access this piece, they can't hit this standard. And the question of like, why not? And what are we going to do about it, right? PLCs come into four questions. What do we want kids to know? How do we know that we know it? What are we going to do when they don't? And what are we going to do when they do? Like, that's basically breaking down PLCs. So that work around language arts of like, what are we going to do about the kids that don't know this? And how do we know that they don't? As opposed to just saying, oh, yeah, they, so part of that is the DRA work, part of that is the individual lessons, part of that is the going back and making sure that they have all the phonics and phonemic awareness understanding. Does that answer?
Thank you.
Very long answer.
Thank you. Dr. Seaman, can we have the time on task in, you know, after this meeting, just so we can know what that is, the correct?
Yes, I will happily give it to you. You want it by the week like Ms., like Mrs. Ellerby did?
Yeah, that would be great.
Great.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
I'll ask you the same question about your bright spot, which is the third grade for reading. What would you say is going on there?
I would say that they're working pretty diligently about, with, with some of the main curriculum. They also have kids that are coming in at a higher level, which is great. And that could, it could be cohort-dependent, like it, it looks a little bit cohort-dependent. But they're really working on like informational, informational reading and fictional literacy. They're going back and forth, making sure that they're doing some work in novels, some work in their benchmark reading curriculum and really like working with kids. They've also added on DRA in a way that they hadn't before. And so now they know exactly where kids need to be in terms of reading with them individually several times a year. So I think that that's part of that work.
What's the DRA?
That's the developmental reading assessment, I sort of talked about that earlier.
Is that something that can be implemented in all grades?
Yes, it is implemented in, in first through third. It's new to third, and it's, sorry, it's implemented first through fourth. So it's been new over the last year or so in third. And so they're spending that time talking about getting students to a certain point. And then again, where are they and how do we match them not getting to that point?
Okay, sounds good. It looks like there's some work to be done at every level.
For sure, yeah.
For sure, thank you.
I don't really have too many questions. My only concern is the reading program and the comprehension. How much reading are they doing in certain grade levels? Because I know the iReady just, you know, takes their summary of what they can comprehend and they ask them questions. But what about the, the reading and writing also?
So they're all using, they're all reading every day in different ways. We're, we're finishing like our, our work on our math adoption and hopefully, we're going to move toward our reading adoption. There is a benchmark reading program that they use. Everybody's reading every day. Kids have books in their hands, everybody's reading at their level. And part of our, part of the things that we're doing is making sure that kids are reading books at their level all the time, every day. The writing piece is a place that we're the least consistent across. People in different classrooms, they're addressing writing at different levels and in different ways. Some of them are using Writer's Workshop, some people are using Step Up to Writing, some people are using the Benchmark Writing Program and a variety of other pieces, meeting the standards. But we don't have an overall curriculum, which is what Ms. Ellerby was talking about, is moving toward that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and what about handwriting? I mean, I don't know, because sometimes it's implemented, sometimes it's not. Where are we at with that?
We have handwriting, handwriting without tears, maybe it's called, yeah, it's called like writing with a cursive without. It's without tears, it's like handwriting without tears, thank you. Handwriting without tears, we use it from TK all the way up to, we actually have it for the older grades also, now that cursive is required all the way through sixth, so we have some of that, yeah.
Great, fantastic.
And we like, the second grade is the transition where they use both printing and cursive. And the district pays for all of that, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Stewart?
Learning without tears, that's what it's called, Learning Without Tears.
That's been used for a long time, I remember that, at least like 15, 20 years.
Changed their name, that's what I couldn't remember.
There was homework without tears, and then there was, yeah, lots of tears, no matter what.
Oh, no tears.
So looking at the discrepancy between like the kindergarten, the rate of growth, so that's a hu, that is a huge leap. But I think one thing we can consider is that those kids were like two, three, and four years old during COVID, correct? Is that fair to say? Or no, maybe they were younger.
They might have been younger. I think the fourth graders are the students who did kindergarten in COVID. And so the fifth graders did first grade online. Those, the fifth graders did first grade online.
These current fifth graders, so that would have impacted it. So, but yet, they, they're doing okay and they, and their, their growth was significant, but they weren't that far below, it looks like.
Yeah, so can I just go back one? I know you haven't really asked your question, but do you see how kindergarten doesn't have any red?
Yep.
It's because you can't be that far below. So when we're talking about growth, they have less to grow. So they can't be two grade levels below. They can be A-grade level below and be pre-primer, right? And not have any skills.
Fetus level, yeah.
So that's why the growth looks like so astronomical in, in kindergarten. And also, that's what happens in kindergarten, right? They go from not knowing anything to suddenly like knowing all their letters and all their sounds and. Sorry, can I answer? And that's different.
Yeah, just another question was, again, looking at behavior. So overall, this year, again, apart from the PBIS programming, like on a daily basis, like how many referral, discipline referrals are you?
That's why I brought my computer, can I share with you? So in the beginning of February, like mid-February, I presented to my staff as part of what we're doing, just like where we were. So this was mid-February and I presented that we had a total of 169 total referrals. That's documented pieces of any behavior that we're noticing, either in class or coming to the office. And that there were, that was referred to by 73 different students. And only four of them had over five, oh, sorry, only four of them had over 10. And only 12 of them had over five referrals, like at all. So that's not even just coming to the office, that's like things that they're constantly having a conversation with, like being disruptive or talking out or petty like theft or large, I didn't, we didn't separate between like coming to the office and, and smaller referrals. But we do, we do meet every Monday as an admin team. We do look at our behavior referral forms and we talk about any student who's hit five. So since January, if you've hit five behavior referrals, even if it's in your own classroom and we've never spoken to that kiddo, we're reaching out to the teacher to say, hey, what's going on with Mark? And how, how are things going? We noticed that as of this week, he's had five referrals. And then we're in conversation of, do they need a check-in, check-out? Do they need a behavior academy? Do they need some other support? And sometimes they're like, yes, I haven't even thought about it, they're really disruptive in my classroom. And sometimes they say, no, no, I got it, he just had a really bad week this week and I've already talked to mom and dad and we're totally fine. And then there's still a group of students who are getting like regular behavior referrals into the office. But those are a group of students who we're regularly having a conversation with, with parents and are already supported in some sort of check-in, check-out or a larger tier two or tier three behavior intervention.
And for those kids who are, let's say they're frequent flyers, which doesn't sound like it's a lot of them, but some who are sort of repeat offenders, are you finding that when the substitute teachers are there, that it's particularly bad or increased? Because that is one thing that worries me in general, is you get some kids who have some behavior difficulties and then, you know, they're manageable by the familiarity of the student or the adults in the room, in the classroom. But then, you know, you get someone on sick leave for three weeks and you have a slew of substitute teachers. And there can be, you know, major difficulties that kind of compound that, but.
Absolutely, as soon as there's, and even if that substitute's in there for one day, we had, we were very thankful to have a training today for second and third grader teachers. They went to Horseman, so all of second and all of third grade was out. That's a lot of substitutes in our.
Yeah, and that's scary, because you're having a bunch of new adults on campus.
Correct. And that's definitely, what we do for our frequent flyers is that we know that they can't manage themselves with a substitute, and so there's a plan in place. know that they can't manage themselves with a substitute. And so there's a plan in place.
I hope so.
Um, already, like, we'll know, you're going to go to this person who you can hang out with. So you're a third grader, but you have a really good relationship with a first grade teacher who you know is going to be there tomorrow. And you spend your day in that first grade classroom, not because you're in trouble, but because you know that everyone's going to be more successful. But sometimes what happens with substitutes is that the kids that are not frequent flyers.
Act out.
Also have some things, not not because it's a kid issue, and not necessarily it's the adult issue, but like the combination. I I think substitute teaching is the hardest thing you could possibly do, and is also the hardest thing for a kid.
Mm-hmm.
Right? It's like a new adult who doesn't know the rules and doesn't know things. And you actually, as a kid, know more than that adult, but you have to figure out how to be respectful of that adult who's maybe making mistakes in your classroom, and you have been there for a hundred and twenty days. So managing that is difficult.
Yep, I understand. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Can I can I ask real quick? What is Behavior Academy? Can you explain?
Oh, yes, sure. So Behavior Academy is one of the things that we were introduced to at a Solution Tree Conference. We went to a Response to Intervention Conference in Pasadena um with a group of staff, all of the school's center representation. And it's um an idea that kids need direct instruction about how to behave in a certain way. And it's not benching, it's not detention. It's like, there's a skill missing clearly, and like, there's some work done around why do you need that? So it might be a student who's disrupting in class over time. And then we're taking them for a moment in a group to say like, why is it important to listen? Here's some skills that are based on this. Why do you need to be able to do this? And how can you do this? What happens to your body that you feel like you need to be disruptive? What are you trying to avoid um doing? Like, write all of that A B C of behavior, and try to get in front of it, so we develop those skills.
And when do you pull them out to do that? Like, how does it work exactly?
It depends on the it depends on the kids and the grade and the work. So it could be like, at the end of a day, when they're doing some catch-up work, there's they're doing it for it's like eight sessions at a time, not until like Tuesday and Thursday at a certain time. It could be that they're having lunch together with the adult, and so instead of sitting in the lunchroom, they're coming together to.
So is it one-on-one?
It's a group with a one or two adults, and not their teacher. Like, there's a fit there's like, you we're just talking about doing one with a group of girls from one grade and a teacher from another grade that need it. And there's a boys from an from one grade and a counselor and another teacher in another grade. And it's not necessarily divided by gender in any way. It's just happens to be there's a TK one that's on its way about keeping your hands to yourself, and like how to learn to not hit. And that um would be with a an aide.
So do you keep a file, and you make sure that you implement it?
Yeah.
And the student understands? And is it working?
It's working-ish. It's new, but it's working-ish. I would say that the way that we're the way that we're collecting that data is the number of referrals decreasing over time. So.
Because um, there's been a lot of talk, I can't remember which grade, but they have a behavioral problem. I don't know if it's fourth grade, third grade in El Rodeo, fourth and fifth. So are we implementing? Are we implementing, I'm assuming?
We are. Um, am I can I talk about the class? So there's a um, there's a special education cluster of students who specifically have behavior needs. And so that is happening in that classroom, and um overall happening constantly. So sometimes we take that those students who have a disability in behavior out of like what we're talking about, because that is a function of their disability. Can I do you want to? Oh, so sorry. Yes, yes, yes. We're we're those kids happen to be in fourth grade. And they're they're um affecting a few other things.
So the reason I'm asking is because I think it's fantastic. And I think if we're educating the kids that are misbehaving, that should move us forward. So that's why I'm asking, is it working? How's it been implemented?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's working. And the really, the way that we're talking about it is like, oh, it hit a certain number of referrals. And we're saying, oh, this group of kids that all have this the same have the same type of referrals over the same period of time. Let's pull them all into a group and teach them how to behave. So then we're looking for those specific kids to have fewer referrals of that type. And that we're seeing, for sure.
Because it's really important to get a grasp on the behavioral issue in fourth, fifth grade before they get into middle school, where it's more difficult.
For sure.
Yeah.
For sure. And all of the parents are like on board, like they're they want that also. It's not something that we're doing just at a school. Like, we're very much connected to that.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Anything else?
Well, I would like to thank you for the report. I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Mrs. Marcus.
The it's somewhat confusing. You talk about ninety-six percent have passed the lessons. What exactly are you referring to? That ninety-six percent have passed the lessons in math, and eighty-five percent have passed? Are those individual lessons that
Yes.
On a daily, whatever that that work up to the uh to the final test, which is what we're seeing in the on the charts?
Yes. So like, sort of like what Ms. Ellerby was talking about, about time on task. And the component of I ready is there's two components. One is a diagnostic, and the other component is a personalized instruction pathway. So the diagnostic, we do three times a year. We presented our first diagnostic. Now we're presenting our second diagnostic against our first. But in order to um improve that work, besides regular instruction, I ready says that the work is improved, and the scores go up because you spend time on your personal pathway. So it's personalized instruction, and kids are required, students are required to take two um lessons a week. And those lessons vary in time, depending on how old the kids are. And then what we're looking at is that when they're taking a math lesson, um, they're passing that at a ninety-one percent pass rate. So ninety-one percent of the lessons that have been taken in math have been passed. And then um for reading, it's eighty-five percent. So again, to Ms. Manicherry's question, I believe it was your question, about where the gap is not as big, like growing as much in reading. And so that's also what we're saying seeing is that there's more students that are not passing in reading, which is part of like what's leading to our learning about what's going on. What Mr. Stewart talked about is like that reading piece, and what are the components around reading, and going back into like, what do our standards say about what we're required to teach around reading?
Okay, um, in the fifth grade, I noticed that in the students do not change, the scores do not, there's only like a seven percent increase in one, and a ten percent increase in the other from the first to the second um carriage. You'll notice there it's
There's seven, right?
Very slim, in terms of the difference between the other grade levels. I don't know what can explain that. But I would assume then, that you will be able to identify these kids that may be recommended for some type of a summer school class, or an Avid class, because these are the ones that are not they're not doing as well. And perhaps, by the time you give the third test, which I I don't know if you would have those results in time, but I think that that should have some way of measuring or weighing whether a student might need some summertime, this school summer school class that we could provide. Because I think that um
Well.
They're going to go into sixth grade, and it's going to be quite a quite a jump for them. And I'm thinking that maybe this might be a way of identifying those kids that are not quite, there's not a.
Well, this shows that they're high achieving, low-growth learners.
Well.
They they're high achieving, low-growth. Besides the fourth grade, fifth grade's the highest. They're high. Seventy percent of them are proficient, but they don't have a lot of growth.
They don't have a lot of growth. That's the thing.
That's the that's the question, is that they're high achieving, low-growth learners, right? So where how do we increase them? They're they're already high. They stay high. Like, how do we get them to to jump?
You're talking about how do you get the lower group to get higher?
Correct.
Because that's the number you want to see go down.
Correct.
So that number is still quite high.
Well, they came in at sixty percent. Sixty percent of the fifth grade came in at grade level. We've kept all sixty percent and grabbed another ten percent of those kids at grade level. So we're doing pretty well. If we get seventy percent of our fifth graders at grade level in math, we're like doing well and beyond. We want it to be even higher, right? But we're always struggling in that fifth grade.
I'm going to come to that point.
But but
I agree with Mrs. Marcus.
I agree with what you're saying, which is that there's no growth there. How do we identify the growth pieces?
Well, I'm going to tell you where
Yeah.
My acid test for this whole thing is, they're going to take the CASP test, and that's the measuring stick. I I know this is all wonderful, and we're doing everything we can for them. But the acid test is when we get the CASP scores, why don't we do better on them than we have been? And I maybe this year, we will with everything that's I'm just saying.
I'm wondering the same thing.
I will be watching. Because that, to me, is where I will see, is this working?
For sure.
Because we're putting a lot of energy and and everything into this, and getting them with the I ready and the N W E As and so on. But the if it doesn't show up in the CASP, that's because that's what we're measured with. I mean, this is wonderful. But I'm sure you agree with me, that when the CASP scores come out, that's what we look at.
For sure.
But Mrs. Marcus, can I add something to that? Um, I just, you guys know, I hold myself to the highest of standards that I also pass back down to you guys. Um, and I mean, I respect that, for example, fifth is coming in at sixty percent. But in my mind, all of these students need to end up at eighty to eighty-five percent. So I know that the the bar is low, you know, of what we've been achieving in the last couple of years. But our students could walk from El Rodeo to Warner. It's so close. And those kids are performing in the eighty, eighty-five range. And they don't have to go much farther to go down Wilshire to Westwood to Fairburn and so on. And those students are all getting eighties to eighty-fives. So I will I will speak to the elephant in the room, which is, we're on our way, we're doing our best, but we have a ways to go. And we're still in February. And this board is at everybody's service. If you want emotional support, we'll pay for it. If you want pullout support, we'll pay for it. If you want afternoon tutoring, we'll pay for it. If you want to, I know you finally want to do it, and thank you very much in advance. If you want to give them summer school, we will pay for it. Okay? So the board has been having many very honest conversations, and we need to move the needle on the achievement. So please, make use of the next three months. You guys need to continue the honest, hard conversations, and we need to get these numbers to the eighty to ninety range, which reflects the almost one hundred million dollars we're spending for three thousand one hundred kids in Beverly Hills, which is exorbitant. So please, focus on the academics. Make sure the distractions are put aside. You can call it whatever you want. You want to rule with an iron fist. You want to what however you want to describe it. But these numbers are not meeting our standards. And I encourage you to come to the board and tell us what you need to make it happen. We are at your service, as we were the prior board when I was on with a few others, and the prior board before me. So the board is not the issue. Um, I don't really know what is the issue, but I want you guys to go back and continue these honest conversations. We need to get there. I I would like to have more of a report of the Danielson evaluation framework, and how is that working into all of this? I would like to know more about um the grade levels that are doing great. If you can ask those teachers to step in to the PLCs for the other grade levels, and let them know. We're going to hear from Mr. Waters. He has escalated the standards to get into honors. Um, and the students are frustrated, and the students have been calling me um about the rigor, and they feel that they're being blocked. So um, as Dr. Seaman says, it's our problem to identify, your problem to solve. And I'm just letting you know, the problem continues. It persists. I'm going to ask you to solve it, please, by the end of the year.
Am I allowed to say something at this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Always.
I I want to acknowledge the exact all of what you said, um, Mrs. Manicherry. Uh, and we all are aware of the sense of urgency, and I agree with that. Um, one of the critical next steps um is this team next sitting up here with you is really diving deep into the a thirty, sixty, ninety day plan.
Thank you.
And uh, one of my, one of our um really intentional, immediate, urgent steps is going to be instruction. And again, you these tools are incredible.
Yeah.
I've been I've been to many districts. These tools are the best of the best. And we're doing a lot, and there's a lot of layers there. So I think it is um something that we're going to immediately focus on in the next in the next thirty days. And what I want to say.
First graders at thirty-seven percent, second graders at thirty-seven percent, so on and so forth. I'm not pointing my my finger at any specific teacher, any specific school. I'm just saying, this is the elementary schools are the foundation. They are the bedrock of the education at BHUSD. And I will not, as a board member, be able to lean on the upper grades and the upper levels, when we know that we're not sending students up there with the foundation. And so the buck stops here
Agreed.
With all of us. Let's have honest conversations, please, and do what we need to do between now and August, now in July, now in August, now in September.
And so a a big piece that we are going to be talking as a team um is really looking at, for one, us being in the classrooms um with intention. And that is critical, so that we're all getting on the same page, and we're getting it across that we're not just coming into classrooms. We're going to be giving actionable feedback that is supportive. And and that's a that's a goal, and we know. And because we just want to make sure we're supporting everybody that needs it.
And and Dr. Hasty, I I appreciate the suggestion. And I will say that um, to my knowledge, that is not something that's been happening in the last six months. And so I welcome the three of you um to visit with our principals and support them as much as you can to move the needle, please.
Can I add to that as well? I I totally love the call to action for that, and I and I totally agree. But we have to remember, there's there's a lot of moving parts. And one factor really is the one part of it is the parents as well. So that means, you know, the communication from teachers to, you know, homeroom teachers to the parents about, hey, this is what we're doing this week. Um, because that is a piece that is essential. Um, or, you know, whether those parents are, you know, on board with enforcing some of the extra assignments that go home and and, you know, not necessarily just saying, oh, well, you have a headache, or, you know, I'm not saying all parents do that. But there is there is a part of it where they have to, you know, come to the table as well. You know, we can have the best um teaching practices in the world, but we also need to continue to have good partnerships, um, and also um education to the parents of what what we need, what we need to have.
Yeah. I mean, I I appreciate the suggestion, but that means the assignments do have to go home. And we've had a little
Yeah, that's true.
You know, we've been there together. We've had these conversations of, is it going to go home? Is it not going to go home? Um, I appreciate that the classroom is, you know, trying to be the primary source of education. But if there can be reinforcement at home, let's do whatever it takes.
Because in some of those very top achieving districts, like La Cunyada, for example.
Sure.
There are there are practices at in some of the homes.
Yeah.
Starting from like a very early age, where there is drill and kill. There's all sorts of things with math.
Even up the street at Warner, you know, I don't know what's going on there that's so different. I'll leave it to to our cabinet and our team. Um, if you want to go there and visit with them, or if you don't, I don't know. But hopefully, the three of you guys can reach down and provide the expertise as a unit together.
I I want to step into you in just one. Okay, go ahead. Go, sorry.
I just wanted to say something real quick. A couple of things. Um, the Danielson program, when are we going to see the reports or the feedback for that? What's what's happening with it? That's that's one. And then I I do want to say something about the homework. I I think it is important um to have the homework. But the homework needs to be, in order for the um parents to see what they've been learning throughout the day, throughout the week. So basically, when the children bring homework home, it's because they've they already know how to do it. It's it's so that the the parents can review it and go, oh, okay, this is what they've learned today, and this is what they're doing. Because if they don't bring homework home, parents can't help their kids. They don't know what's going on in the classroom. So I don't think they should have homework where the parents need to get tutors, and they need to teach the kids, because the kids don't know how to do the homework. I I think that's not helpful at all, not for the students and not for the parents, because they'll get frustrated. So a lot of um families have been talking about the homework, where there's no homework, there's no vocabulary, there's no spelling tests, not in every class. And that's another thing I uh which kind of I I don't understand why it's happening. Let's say if you have three or four fourth grade classes, why are they all doing something different? I think they should be doing a lot of the same thing, so that the parents and the families don't feel like, I wish I had that teacher, or I wish my child was in that class. That I just I'd like to solve something like that, so that we would bring the homework back, because some teachers don't believe in homework. And I frankly, as a parent, don't want my child bringing homework that he doesn't know how to do. Or they how to do, or they don't know how to do. They need to know how to do it. So, it's just reinforcement, review.
I will work with Dr. Seaman about the Danielson framework, and we'll get back to you. And I appreciate the conversation. We're all striving for a level of equity that, of higher standards, and we, you know, I having my own children, you know, I don't, I, we went through the same thing, but we don't want that. I understand that, so we acknowledge that, and we'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
You ready for Mr. Waters?
We're ready to move on to.
Middle school?
Well, Mr. Waters.
Oh, I have not, Mr. Waters.
Yes.
I know.
Unless he fell asleep.
Mr. Waters, Mrs. Marcus is calling you.
I get it. Ooh, this chair is mighty warm. Good evening, esteemed board, Dr. Hasty, Ms. Collins-Williams, Dr. Seaman, and members at large, Mr. Waters, principal, Beverly Vista Middle School. I paid them a lot of money. I bought my own chair squad with me. All right, there we go. All right, thank you for bearing with me while I find the slides. Similar to my colleagues, we have the same goal for the district, engaging students in learning, supporting positive student behavior, and growing, developing professionally. We are in progress still in two of them, we feel that, and supporting positive student behavior, that we have met that goal, but we feel like, even though we've met it, we're going to continue to move forward and try to surpass our goals in that area. So, as we move forward, January was a very, very busy month for us. We hit the ground running. We had, in addition to some fires, we had NWEA testing going on, we had data chats going on, we had our Butterfly Project, and we were super lucky to have Joe Alexander come out. He's one of the few survivors from the Holocaust, and he spoke with our kids, it was a full auditorium. In addition to that, we also had, and are still in the process of a very successful Black History Month celebration that was championed by some of our amazing parents and I, just in support. I want to thank the board members for coming out and supporting all those events. It was great to see you. Where you put your time matters, and the kids see you there, and the parents see you there, and our staff sees you there. That means a lot to us. So, thank you very much for that. In addition to all those things, our counseling team went out into all classrooms, and they gave lessons on building resilience. That's super important for us. Life is hard. Everyone who's sitting here is dealing with some kind of challenge, and until we help the kids understand that that is what life is, and fighting through those challenges and persevering, it's going to be really difficult for them to be successful. In addition to that, my team went out, and myself, to our colleagues at Horseman at Elrodale, and did our fifth grade welcome. I tried my best to inspire them. There's a picture from me from behind, which some will tell you is probably the better side of me, talking to my horseman incoming fifth graders. They were super cute, they were really excited, the Elrodale kids were really excited to come. We are starting to see a change in the community as people start thinking about our middle school and the talk that goes on every month when we have our ambassador tours and the parents come. People are very excited, there is a buzz that's going on, and we are really happy to have them. In addition to that, we also had our best in show and open house events, which we saw some of you guys there. Thank you for coming out. We are continuing our CER writing content, our writing and different content areas, and as well in science and things like that. We were lucky, our avid speakers, we brought out an entertainment lawyer to our kids, which was really successful, and the kids were really happy to have those people come out and share their expertise in their different fields. As we move forward, oh, and we also had our seventh grade outdoor ed trip, which unfortunately we had to cut a little bit short due to the weather. As we look forward, as we start talking about engaging students in learning, we feel really happy with the progress that we're making. We, our growth in school, each one of the core subject areas is in the high achievement, high growth quadrant. We are super thrilled with our math department, which made the biggest jump out of the three testing areas. They went up eight percentile points. I could not be more proud when I go into their PLTs and I see them working together. Recently, I walked in one of them, and they're planning on how they're using IABs in order to increase student testing and increase student achievement. So, we still are doing really well, but we know we can do better. Moving ahead, we saw a slight improvement, not quite as much in reading, we only went up one point. We are, one of our biggest challenges right now is YouTube. Kids love to watch TV, and people just don't read quite as much, and so that continues to be a challenge area for us, but we know that we can break that barrier and improve in that area. And then, moving on to science, we saw a modest gain, but still a gain, it was three percentage points in that area, so we were thrilled about that. My science team has fully embraced the PLT. I love going in and going to talk to them and listen to them as they work together to increase their effectiveness as an apartment. All right. So, one of the things I'm most proud of is supporting our students and positive behavior. We had 135 kids out of our almost 700 who had perfect attendance, we're thrilled about that. Out of our close to 700 students, we had 566 of them who had no negative marks on their conduct and behavior, so we're super happy about that. It's just a different feel on campus now. They say that leadership affects culture, but I think really the biggest change is the amount of presence that our administrators are on campus. We're in the hallways every passing period, we're getting in the classrooms, we are doing instructional rounds where my APs and I are going in classrooms together, and we're talking about what we're seeing and how we can bring what we're seeing back to our instructional leadership team and take the things that are successful and take them back to the departments so their department personnel can learn from the great teaching that does happen on our campus. In addition to that, our student attendance is hovering just below our target at 94.92. January was hard for us, there was a lot of holidays, there was a lot of stuff going on, but we have every faith that we're going to be able to get that up above 95 percent. We talk a lot about PBIS right here in this, God, I feel like I was here like a week ago or a day ago, talking with you guys about our gold. One of the things that is super important for us is preventative. We want to get out in front of things before they become problems, and that is why you see us in the hallways and in classrooms as much as possible. To that effect, we dedicate a lot of time talking to our kids, whether it be in admin chats, but also in our Bulldog Days. So, we have something called Bulldog Days, we have them at the beginning of the year, and we had it again in the second semester, because we believe that kids don't hear anything until you say it 21 times. So, that was our attempt to get in and repeat some of the things that are really important to us. So, we brought everyone in, each grade level, and we talked to them about what our expectations are for their conduct, not only on campus but out in the world. We believe that we are training adults, future adults, we're not just training the kids that are in front of us, and we want them to be who we know they can be, and so that's super important for us. In addition to that, every quarter, we have our Student Spotlight Lunch. We had over 30 kids were nominated by staff members, not just by teachers, for a variety of reasons, improvement, achievement, looking out for other kids. We also have our Fourth Core Store. We just started our Centennial Citizens Award, where we are looking for kids doing great things. Last month, we had Sam Kaminsky win that award for being an upstander. We have another young lady, I can't tell you who it is, but we're about to surprise her and her family with her award as well. We believe that when you look for good things, you'll see more great things, and we have some really great things happening on our campus. Among that are the 284 students who earned Principal's Honor Roll, which is 3.75 or higher, or Principal's Honor Roll, which is 3.5 or higher. Moving on to growing and developing professionally, as the other principals have mentioned, we have our weekly meetings with PLT, our Bulldog Leadership Team, our Site Leadership Team. One of the positive moves that we made this year is that we no longer talk about some of the management issues that occur. It's middle school, it's like building a better mousetrap. They will figure out a way to be tardy, they will figure out a way to be disruptive, but what we found is if we can limit and focus our conversations just on instruction and achievement, that that is going to turn the tide for us. If we can improve the instruction that will limit some of the shenanigans that happen in the middle school, if we can get the kids to want to be in their seats and paying attention and engaged in the lessons, that our achievement is going to improve. And I think that this year, we're seeing the fruits of that labor. Our teachers have really embraced that, and instruction is, and in achievement, it's all we talk about in our leadership team. So, I'm really proud that they've accepted that challenge, and they are going on and implementing that in their classrooms. Lastly, because one of our teachers is here, hopefully he's still here, we do a variety of PD for our teachers. We believe that teachers should be learners as well. And one of the things, one of our esteemed teachers, Mr. Isaac Swanson, who's here back there, he didn't know I was going to talk about him, but I'm going to say some nice things about him, led a PD, a PD on RTI, Response Intervention. So, when we went to our schools toward recognition, shameless plug, one of the things that they talked about is that schools that look like ours in affluent neighborhoods don't typically get that designation. They're just, those kids are high achievers because they're high achievers, but the schools themselves are not necessarily doing things to help every learner learn. At our school, we have replicable practices that we are actually going to go up to Monterey and present next week so that other people can learn, and while we're there, we're going to go and learn from other schools as well. Me and Dr. K, yeah, we'll be there, learning with our notebooks as well. So, Mr. Swanson, he led a PD on academic support. So, currently at our school, we run a variety of different interventions, whether it be math and English support or Core Academy, and he led a brilliant PD on Core Academy in providing students with essential skills by navigating middle school and helping them with things like organizational skills and giving them one-on-one individualized support. He's really a very dynamic teacher, and so we noticed that in him, and we tapped him in order to lead PD for the rest of our staff. In addition to that, the esteemed Joe Little, who is an instructional wizard, met with our gen ed and special ed math support teachers and led a brilliant PD with them on how to help struggling students acquire the skills that they need in order to become more successful in mathematics. We're super proud of the work that we're doing at our school. We're starting to see the results. I know that sometimes it can be frustrating if you're not seeing an immediate improvement in things, but sometimes kids are more like plants than they are like cars. If your car breaks down, you take it in the shop, you pay $5,000, and you get your car back and it works brand new. Sometimes with kids, you got to water them a little bit and give them a little bit of sunshine and let them grow. We believe in the mission, we embrace it wholeheartedly, we love our kids, and we're doing everything we can to help them be successful. And that, my esteemed board, is my report.
Great, great report, very thorough, and I want to congratulate you on the percent going up as well. Great job with all that, and it's always good to hear about how, being reminded about BVMS being a school to watch. And I only had a question about, for your charts that you had up for the growth and achievement, about the quadrant by grade, where you wrote like students 599, is that for all, like, it's all three grades?
Yes, it is. So, if I may, one of the challenges is because we administered that test right when we came back, it, some of the numbers, if you'll notice, we run almost 700, and our numbers are a little bit low, and it was because of the fire. So, absenteeism during that time really hurt us, and so, we believe that our scores are actually higher than what you'll see in the graph. It's just, it was such a traumatic time for our community that was, we didn't get the output. As proud as we are of what happened, we think that we probably would have done even better were we at a test right now.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Remy.
Mr. Russell Stewart?
I'll keep this short because these lovely ladies next to me probably have eight billion questions for you. I just want to congratulate you too, but I also want to just thank you so much. Every time that I see you, your energy is amazing, and I truly believe that that rubs off on your teachers, it rubs off on your students, and the numbers are showing that. And, you know, I was going to make a joke that it's, you know, it's cute that you bring your own cheering section, but, I mean, it's completely warranted, and, you know, and you're doing such a great job, and I truly believe that that's a reflection, not just on the professionalism, but it's you as an individual, just because your energy is just absolutely incredible, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Manicherry?
Thank you. Mr. Waters, great job on making a lot of improvements in a short amount of time. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
What should we do about reading? What's the plan there? Because I would say, you know, you're around 70 percent for math and science. What are, what are your thoughts on the reading path forward?
So, we've been having a lot of conversations with our English Department Chair and our English Department. You know, it's not like it was in the old days. We're fighting a lot of different things now, like podcasts and YouTube and the cell phone, we won't even get into that. So, what we're doing is we're seeing people reading in class, and we're trying to like expose kids to books so that they can discover the joy of reading. And we believe that we continue to give them that exposure and introduce them to books that they've never really considered, and how well they're written, that they too will develop that love. So, this is the fight that we're willing to fight, and we're happily engaged in that battle as we speak.
Yeah. I was a little surprised by it because even the math and the science has so much reading comprehension. So, that's interesting. What do you think about maybe moving the outdoor education trips to later in the year and being a little bit more protective of the instructional time leading up to testing?
So, there's.
I mean, and I know that that's reserved a year in advance.
Yeah, they are, they are. So, for the board members who are not aware, so, the outdoor ed trips are near and dear to me. I've been running them every year since I was actually a teacher at Elrodale. They're beautiful for a lot of different reasons. A, you're getting kids out of the city into an environment that they've never been in too frequently. They're learning about themselves, and they're pushing themselves through events like ropes courses and trusting and working together as a unit. The other positive benefit is the relationships that they create with staff. We are getting an opportunity to see them in ways that we wouldn't ordinarily see them on campus and have those interactions. I was fortunate to have that with one of my board member's children last year when they had a calamity during the outdoor ed trip, and watching how resilient she was and fight through that injury and stay there for the rest of the time. That is something that we'll always share together, and in the absence of that, I probably wouldn't have the relationship I have with that student that I currently have. The issue, two things that we run into is that those camps, especially the really good ones, do fill up sometimes a year or more in advance, and so you do start to get kind of locked into certain trips during certain times of the year. The other piece is, is that, and this is important to all of us, is state testing. The more we push them back, not only, we are able to get more instruction in, but we're also interfering with preparation for those tests that are coming up, and we don't want to book in those trips too far so that they start to interfere with state testing. So, it really is a balancing act. We want to like fill as many eggs in that basket as we can, but I hear you. At one point earlier in the Dedicated Middle School, we were running one of those trips at the beginning of the year. we were running one of those trips at the beginning of the year. And we didn't feel like that was great for kids either because they barely knew themselves and we were taking them out when they were still learning our campus, so.
Maybe the love of reading is something that can come home. I'll tell you, I mean, my, I have a middle schooler. I try not to talk about my children, but my, the passion and the teach, the teaching is there. The vibe is there, but I, the kids are not getting that much homework at home. And so I just would say that you guys can lean on us a little bit, you know, for the reading and that kind of thing. To Mrs. Sabog's point, it's, it is hard to not be able to help your child with their homework and starting from middle school, it becomes hard for us. But I think that reading is something that anybody can be doing at home. So let us know.
Sure.
Thank you.
If I may, two things. Number one-
But it has to be required, you know what I mean? It can't be like-
I don't want to put it on the parents, I hear you.
Yeah.
That being said, I walked into math class today with my principal of the day, who was amazing, one of the Elrodale third graders. He did a better job than I did. I don't want to say that out loud because you guys may actually hire him tomorrow. The guy was phenomenal. And the teacher had led a, a very good lesson and afforded the kids an opportunity to start their homework in class. And in talking with the teacher, my belief is that the teacher is trying to afford the kids an opportunity to seek and get assistance while they're there instead of waiting for the kid to get home having struggles and then having to rely on a tutor or their parents and things like that. Again, it is a balancing act. I hear you, we'll have those conversations. I do believe that practice, especially in the area of mathematics, is super important. So your point's well taken. With the reading, I want to start an initiative where, you know, at home, we have what we call No Tech Tuesdays on Tuesday nights. And we turn everything off, we want to read, we enjoy dinner together and we talk about what we read. Maybe we can start having conversations with families about just taking 30 minutes out of the evening and just reading together. I believe that if students see their parents engaging in that amazing activity, that maybe it will become something they become interested in as well.
So I want to say thank you. Thank you for your leadership, thank you for your energy. Thank you, I think you're doing an amazing job. I'd like to highlight a couple of things that, first of all, the trip. So the trip was shortened and I think you did an incredible, amazing, emergency leadership that not everybody in the district knows what you did. And basically, it was a weather issue. You made the choice to shorten the trip because it was dangerous for the kids to stay there. A lot of parents didn't understand, but it was something about the flooding in the campgrounds and you got the buses out there at, what, midnight? And they came to Beverly Vista at 12:30. We were still there till something like that, right?
So just know that any time something like that happens, it's never just one person. I made the call because the campground that we were in, which is beautiful, it's one of the best places you can go. If you haven't gone, please go to LCAP with your family. And when you're there, read. Sarah Kaber and Dr. Hasty actually were thought partners with me and I'm very thankful to them for that. There was a lot of logistical stuff. Listen, at the end of the day, the kids were safe, but the campground is subject to flooding and I don't want to take a risk with someone else's kids. I had a great conversation with a parent today when talking about imperantis lokai. These are our kids when they're with us and your kids are my kids. And so when it became apparent that there was a risk of flooding, we didn't hesitate. There was a wonderful young lady who works here in the district, Gilda, who helped me secure the buses. She probably made about 15 telephone calls. It was a team effort. I wish I could take all the effort. I need a little pat on the back right now, but-
Well, you were there in the rain with a T-shirt as, you know, and risked your own health for our kids. And I saw that because I was there, so just thank you.
Thank you for that.
Fantastic job. Now I want to highlight another thing that you did. So I happened to listen to, on Friday, the PTA. I was listening. I would really like, because I can't, Friday, I'm really, really busy. So I just had it on, so I don't know if anybody was speaking to me. One time I knew somebody said something, so I said hi. But I'm back and forth doing tons of stuff, but I was listening. And you were unbelievable what you said. So it was regarding Black History Month and you made a speech, I could say a speech because it was, it sounded like a speech, that how families need to integrate and get involved with different cultures. And the parents were amazing. I loved what they had to say. I love that they strategically planned it in a way to bring speakers out there that would be telling their stories of, again, I, I missed the other Black History Month that I really wanted to go to, but I didn't realize I had something on my schedule. But I would like for you to say it so we could highlight who was there, what they said and how it implemented in World War II.
Sure.
It was amazing. There were three. So there was a writer, there was a fireman and there was another gentleman that, that was in World War II or-
Yeah, so thank you for that. Again, I, I cannot take the credit. I had an amazing group of parents, one of whom is here, Victoria Tate. Candace Zola, Dr. Reggie, Phillips. It's, it was such a dynamic group of women. I cannot take the credit. They, because they thought about things that were important to me, but put them in a way that was accessible for the kids. And so the conversation that we're having, and I can talk to you about the speakers that came out. Malcolm Spillman is a writer, big time Hollywood writer who penned the new Captain America movie. Dr. Jill Humphries, who's a, an amazing scholar who talked about how black people fought in World War II and, and the sacrifices they made in order to support the efforts. And, and one of the conclusions that she drew, which I thought was really powerful for the kids is that black people and Jewish people have historically worked together, not eve, not only during that time, but also during the civil rights struggle here in America. And what a powerful dynamic that is. We had a group of LA County firefighters come out and not only were they super cute and hunky, the women were quite happy that. I know there were more women staff there that day than any other stuff combined.
Can we have them come out again?
We, I, I would like to have them come out as well. I'm jealous of their arms. So one of the things that, that was a really powerful takeaway is not only that they tell their story, but it was important for the kids to see that there were this, this group of dedicated, talented and selfless human beings who are willing to give their lives for people that they had never met, who were wrapped in black skin. And so it was really powerful. It's interesting because middle school's middle school. And it's not uncommon for, in an assembly for kids, a few kids to be off task. And those kids were riveted and they were really super dialed in into that. And I was, I was touched. It was really amazing. We were scheduled, actually to have, again, because Victoria Tate is amazing, to have the Compton Cowboys come out. Unfortunately, we have to reschedule them. We're hoping to have them come out. Their story is, is unique and, and amazing. And I think the kids, there's a lot of value there for that. Shameless plug. For those of you guys who are around tomorrow, we are having a soul food festival, the proceeds of which are going to be donated towards the victims of the Altadena fire. So if you have a little bit of appetite in you and you want to try some food that might not be in your culture, you should come out. That, one of the restaurants that we used before a couple of years ago, they will be one of the people there and the food is really, really good. So to answer your question, this is the challenge. And this is something that's near and dear to my heart. Not because I'm black, but because I'm a human being. One of the challenges that we face right now is that all of us are operating in these independent silos. So when Black History Month comes, it's super important to all the black people and they all jump in and they want to celebrate that because they want to be acknowledged for their struggles and their achievements. When Holocaust Remembrance comes or, or all our Jewish friends jump in and they, because it's super important to them, they want to have their hardships acknowledged and, and their achievements. And they want to make sure these things never happen again. Asian American, they have their amount. Latin Americans. Native Americans are, we have a women's, his, oh my God. I have a mind meltdown right now. Our women's movement, there's all these different groups who are super important to who we are as a human being. And until we start to care about people outside of our silo and support people in theirs, we are doomed for failure. One of the things that makes our community so amazing is the diversity that's within that community. The numbers may not be high, but we pull from Islamic students and from overseas, we have Korean students. We have people from Ukraine here and we need to celebrate each other. We can't just care about our own tribe.
100%.
And so that was the speech that you were talking about. It wasn't so much as a speak, as a call to arms or a call to support. I think that we have some amazing, enriched cultures here in this community and I want to explore that. We do a great job at our multicultural month. But I think we can do even more. But I can't do it by myself. I was fortunate to have that group of amazing moms help. I hope that we're able to do that for other cultures. If they want to partner with us, the door is open. We want to celebrate, we want to do some great things.
That's fantastic. And thank you, and thank you, parents, for being involved. That's what it takes. It takes, that's what our community is all about. It's our parents are involved and that's what we want. Another thing I wanted to highlight that you said-
Oh my God, thank, I, I did not, but I'm going to pay you afterwards. Thank you.
You said improve instructions so our students will want to be in their seats.
Yeah.
That is so important. Thank you for that. Thank you for saying that. We need to improve our instructions. We need to allow our students to be excited, to sit in their classroom, to enjoy the instructions and then we won't have the behavioral problems. So thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sabog. I love that you highlighted what, what I had missed unfortunately. And I, I was really very, very interested in hearing what you had to say. And I, I'm sorry I missed that. And I'm sorry I will miss the soul food tomorrow, but-
If you want, I'll pack you something.
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call upon you to do that. But no, I share the sentiments with my colleagues that, you know, I love what I'm hearing from, from the middle school for sure. I just want to ask you again, getting back to the idea of, you know, we want to really improve our academic standings and our academic achievement and the CASP scores and those types of things. So one thing I have been wanting to focus on, and this is a question for Dustin as well, is, so some of the C students, some of the students who are kind of like hanging out in the middle, let's say with math, right? What are we doing for them? What funds, what programs are going for intervention? Because those are the kids that are going to be kind of like the swing vote when they start taking the CASP. And they can, we can really make a difference, you know? So we can give the same sort of instruction to, you know, the whole class. And then I know you guys have a way of identifying those who are like the lower third or those who need more intensive support. But I just want to know, you know, what are we doing? Is it avid? Is it, what, what, what are the programming to get those kids up so that they can really contribute to some of the top, you know, scoring kids?
That's a great question, thank you. It's interesting you brought this up because we actually in our site leadership team, BLT as I call them, not bacon lettuce and tomato, but the Bulldog Leadership Team, have gone through and we have identified all the kids that you're talking about. We dub them our bubble babies. Because they are in the bubble and they're our babies and we want them to do well. And so what we're doing is we are identifying people to work with those kids individually so they can get that small group instruction. We're also targeting those kids to go in our intervention classes, such as the math and English support and then also in our Core Academy classes. Sometimes, working with kids in that environment, it, it's sort of like telling someone they need to go to the dentist. They know, they know they need to go, but they don't want to go because it's painful. Part of that is, is because in putting them in those programs where actually they have to sacrifice one of their electives. And so one of the things that we're hoping as we come in next year is moving kids into those programs at the beginning of the year because what we found is that once they're in the elective, getting them out of the elective tends to be a little bit of a battle because they get very upset, then they get their parents really upset and it becomes a battle. And don't get it wrong, I am a lover of the arts. The elective program that we offer, when we do these ambassador tours, these people come from the private schools and from other, they are blown away at the electives that our district is able to offer these kids. And I understand that not everyone's going to go to Harvard and all that other stuff. It, it's important, but we also want our kids to be able to read, write and do math. And so we believe that where we're going is, is the next best step. Mrs. Manishery, I, I heard you when you said that there are some of the kids that are upset at the new direction that we're taking in regards to testing.
Oh yeah, I forgot to bring that up with you.
Oh no, I'm with you. I, I hear every, I listen to you guys very carefully. I understand their concerns. However, I sit on, on a different side of the fence because here's what I know. We have an amazing school filled with amazing educators. Our scores don't reflect, in my opinion, the quality of student that we have nor does it reflect the quality of educators that we have in our building. We believe that there are a group of people who do not take the testing seriously. And so I understand what their concern is in terms of having to earn their way into those honors classes. But life's hard sometimes, like sometimes you have to earn your way into a job and sometimes you have to earn your way into this. One of the things I love about the new honors criteria is that it quantifies people going into an intervention class and it quantifies someone earning their way into an honors class. I already know what the arguments are going to be. My kid doesn't test well. Well, when it comes time for them to get into those UC schools or the Ivy League schools back east, that argument's not going to hold up. So what we're going to do is we're going to put some stuff in place and offer them opportunities to help their kid learn how to test well. I hear their concerns and they're valid. Like, listen, if you feel a certain way, you feel a certain way. However, we think that this is the next best way forward for our school.
Yeah. Mrs. Manishery, you already spoke, so if I could continue.
Sorry.
So, no, it's okay.
I didn't mean to take your-
So, okay, so then you're talking about the, the C student, let's say. So there's, there's avid and I understand the problem with them, you know, straddling, you know, their electives versus the intervention programs. What other intervention programs, say, are going on like, that may require either after school or is there anything like that? Because again, it may well come down to the parent factor. If a parent, you know, and I know kids are so busy these days and we have to pull them to go to the dentist. We have to pull them to do a lot of things. But I want to make sure that, you know, if we do have these programs and it does, you know, require that a parent, say, is firm and says, you know what? I know the last thing you want to do right now, you know, to the, the sixth grader is go to a math intervention right now because not only you're not good at math, but you don't like going because we don't like, kids don't like to do things they're not good at. So it's a unique issue when we have, you know, kids who are, let's say, the C student in math. But those are the ones that I hope that you guys are shepherding along with their parents to really work with them so that they do the interventions. Of course, you know, the teacher's doing their best as well. But there's a home and school partnership to get those kids, that whole cohort to, to rise up and be great scores on, on the CASP.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to just compliment you completely on what you've done with the school in the last year, Richard. I, I, you know, I just feel so good that I know that you are at the helm and doing what's best for the kids. And I have never had a doubt in my mind that you would be the person to, to lead them on.
Forty years ago, could you imagine me, us sitting here having this conversation?
No, never. But I, I have to tell you, I, I do have just a couple of quick things I want to ask you because I, just to clarify something, and one is, can you explain to me why the median growth percentile and the median achievement percentile? I think that's something that, I know what they mean, but I don't know how you're defining achievement and growth at this point because it doesn't make, I just wanted to see the difference. Well, I did, but I didn't understand what they were referring to. That was what I wanted to make sure because, I, I understand what median means and all of that, but I didn't know how you were defining growth and how you were defining achievement. Those were two of the things that I hadn't-
So what it, what that helps us with growth really helps us with, we were talking earlier around Elrodale, is ensuring that if a- talking earlier around Alordano, is ensuring that if a student comes in high, we're not still pushing them to continue and not allowing them to just plateau. And so, that's what that growth score is, and it helps us make sure that just because the student is smart doesn't mean that we're not educating them, pushing them even to the next grade, or even higher than that. It's a good, important score for us all to keep.
Yeah. I, I want to talk about something that I, as a youngster going to school, remembering having to do, and that was called reading a book and giving a book report. I don't ever know what happened to that, but I sure don't see it anymore, and I don't know that our teachers are requiring that. I have, I, that just blows my mind that he, that the kids come home and they don't, they don't, they don't, they, they don't read for, at home, a book to read for a report, or whatever. I, I, that, I don't know if that, I haven't seen it in my two grandchildren, but that, that bothers me. So, that's, and, and I gotta tell you something about having teachers love to, or the kids loving to be in their seat when their teachers teach. That's the teacher that does that, and that is something that I think if we could have every teacher in our district have that core of wanting the, the, the personality, the, the love to, to the kids, to, to challenge them and have them know that they really, really feel it, those kids will want to be in their street. They'll be looking forward to coming to the class and finding out what's gonna happen today, and that's something that's, well.
Can I speak to that a little bit?
You can't beat that, is, in, in, and that, you know that as well as I do.
Yeah, I, I, I do, I do want to just speak to that a little bit with, and I understand that, because we all had book reports. We, we had to read books, and we had to talk about what we learned, and we had to do what is now called recall. And so, the thing, when you're looking at a depth of knowledge, and you have, it's almost like a triangle, you know, you got, you get up, you get recall, and then you go all the way up to analysis, synthesis, and reteaching. So, I just want to be clear, at every level, especially at the lower levels, we're really getting into that recall, you might see where students are giving pieces back to what they read, comprehend, they can reiterate it back in their own words to a degree. Paraphrase is a little higher than recall. So, um, I would argue that at junior high at this level, we would want them to get a little higher than the recall level. So, just, and I know, I, the old school, we, 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 when I, when I was a kid, I did that. I, I had to regurgitate, but with the technology we have now, we're expecting students not only to recall, but synthesize and then retell, and it's, so it's a whole different level. And I just want to, I acknowledge that, because I felt the same way, and I've had that issue, and I've thought about it many times, because it's not what it used to be. Yeah, I agree.
My feeling is, is that just to read, just to be able to explain what it's all about, or, I mean, that, not, but that's something that I.
Can, can I say something? I think you're implementing something like that in every class. What is it called again?
It's CER.
Yes.
Yeah.
CER. Can you explain the CER?
Uh, so, claim, evidence, reasoning. So, basically, the kids are reading things, they're making a claim based on what they're, they're citing the evidence, and then they're, so it's, the, the writing is there. It, it's just that you don't see a big book report, but it's, it's happening across all grade levels and all subject areas.
But they do it in every class, right?
They do it in every class, yeah.
Including math?
Uh, math typically does it this year. Um, I have negotiated a deal with them where I want them to do the IABs. Um, and part of the reason I believe why we're starting to see such the growth that you're wa, that you saw, the eight percent growth is there, um, following through with their, that, part of that compromise. Um, we will hopefully return back to that in mathematics, but across the other subject areas, they're implementing it, so.
Okay, well, have we completed the round from Ju- Junior High, the middle school? So, it's time for the high school. Thank you so much, Mr. Waters.
Thank you, boy.
All right. Again, President Marcus, Board of Education, thank you so much for having me tonight. Again, um, we'll, I know we're getting late, so I'll jump sort of straight in. Here's our front page that you guys are all familiar with. Um, I'm gonna say that we are in progress in everything. I am not yet confident to say that we have achieved anything, because we still have quite a bit of the school year left, and so, um, I look forward to kind of explaining how it is. We're gonna meet all of these things, um, sort of the next time that we discuss as a group. So, we're gonna get right into it. Um, oops, skipped a lot. Holy Toledo. Okay, so just a couple of highlights, um, some of them that happened tonight, just, um, honoring some of our students and academic achievements, um, because this first bucket, as we know, is talking about engaging students in learning. Um, so, we've celebrated our successes with the National Merit Program tonight, um, as well as Academic Decathlon. One thing that we didn't talk about yet, um, is our Science Olympiad that actually competed last week as well in our regional, um, competition, and we had some students that finished first in that regional competition in astronomy and disease detectives, um, second in microbe emissions, and then, and third in entomology. So, and then there's other ones beyond that, but those are kind of our, our top winners from the, um, Science Olympiad last week. So, we have students that are really going out and achieving at a high level in a lot of places, making our, um, making us proud throughout the county. Um, in addition to that, the College Board, we talked a lot in the last strategic plan update about some of our AP success, which is, continues to be really, really impressive, um, almost across the board in, at our school. Um, one of the things, this was drilling down again more to an individual level, some successes that we saw, um, that we were honored with, in addition to sort of in the aggregate for our school, earning the, um, some of the silver and gold awards from AP for our, um, honors awards. But also, we had seven students that were recognized, um, by AP for the first-generation, um, uh, recognition program, so like first-generation college students, recognized by the College Board. We had seven, um, national Hispanic recognition, um, program students, and one national African-American, um, recognition program student. So, we had a lot of, uh, students that received awards from the College Board specifically for their great work last year on AP exams. Um, moving to our second slide, um, we are happy to have a couple weeks ago, our first ever, and we're gonna call it annual, because we intend to have it every year, our first annual, um, job fair at BHHS. Uh, so, we, when we're talking about engaging the students in learning and how we do that, certainly that starts in the classroom, and it starts in other ways, but it also, especially for our older students in high school, is beginning to help them make those connections with what they're gonna be doing later in life. So, um, we were very happy that we were able to work with, um, Ms. Dubin, our career advisor, um, and really go out and find some amazing people in our community to come in and work at, uh, or not work, but, um, present at our job fair, meet and greet our students. We had our students come. Um, you can kind of see in the background of the pictures, our students were asked to dress like they would almost for a job interview. Um, so they came, they met, um, met a lot of folks, and really started to find, like, where there might be some employment opportunities here this summer and in the future, and really be able to ask critical questions about careers and some of these pathways. So, this is a little different than our Career Day, which will be in school coming up in a couple of weeks, where we really bring in dozens and dozens of presenters to speak to all students. This was voluntary after-school for students that are maybe looking at employment in the near term, but also being able to try to find things that they would interest them, um, for careers. So, we're happy to do that. Um, student AP info sessions, um, we, uh, just completed those again, and so the, the goal of this, the purpose of this is to try to make sure that students that will be rising into the next grade level have the information that is needed, thank you, uh, the information that is needed to help them be successful in choosing which AP courses they want to challenge themselves in. So, we just finished that, um, and then we're also excited to offer two new AP courses next year. So, we successfully rolled out, um, our first year of AP Seminar this year, both in the elective format, as well as the 10th-grade AP Seminar course, which actually counts for 10th-grade English credit. And then next year, we will be adding the second course in that sequence, which is the Capstone AP Course, um, which is AP Research. And so, we're very excited that we're gonna be offering that next year as well as, and this was not just something that you can do without being awarded it, we were actually awarded a pilot for AP Cyber Networking next year because of the good work that we do as an AP school, as well as the application that we put forth. So, we'll actually be having AP, um, Cyber Networking next year as well. So, a couple of new AP courses for, again, for our students, and like, cyber networking is such a cool thing, if you, if you think about it, like, for students that want to think about going into the technology field, talking about engaging in students and learning, that is truly something that is different, that a lot of students may not have, um, an opportunity to take otherwise. So, we're very excited about that. Some other things that we've been doing to re- reward students, um, and/or to recognize and excite students about learning. Um, we, this year, we kind of followed suit with what the middle school has done in years past, and we have begun a Student Spotlight luncheon. Um, this has been sponsored by our PTSA, so I want to thank, I know Nathan was here earlier, but, um, Ms. Pedersen and Mr. Kruger, um, for their, um, cosponsorship of this with us, and for, um, actually purchasing the lunches for our students. Uh, this is an awesome time. Each of our teachers get to choose one student a year. So, we do it kind of in thirds. We're gonna have three lunches this year, and teachers get to choose a student by their criteria for somebody that is doing excellently. Um, one of the other things that we're hearing a lot of feedback from parents from, that is a new phenomenon in our schools, especially with all of the security protocols that we now have in place, as well as sort of COVID and post-COVID, is that they feel more disconnected from our campus. They feel less opportunities to come to our campus. So, in speaking with Jen and Nathan this morning, we, um, are gonna like to move forward and look at inviting the parents of these students to this luncheon as well during the school day, so that we can start to bring in, um, more sets of parents, uh, multiple times a year, um, so they have that opportunity to both see their student and celebrate their student's success, but also just be on campus, uh, see what the vibe is like on campus. And so, that's one of the ways in which we're really gonna try to bring more parents back onto campus. CASP preparation, so this is obviously, um, really big. One of the things is we've gone around, um, and we've, I've talked with this group before about is the motivation piece. Like, what, what is it that drives students to be successful? Um, it may be a little bit easier when students are very young to tell them, like, this is just super important, you have to do it, because mommy and daddy want to be proud of you. Um, as parents, as board members, as educators, we know that that gets harder the older that students get. So, in talking with ASB, for example, we were in there, um, a couple of weeks ago, and Remy was in there, um, really trying to understand with students, what is it that will become incent, or wha, how is it that we can get students, um, interested in being as successful in the CASP as possible? Um, one of those things, and it's something that sometimes I think we forget about, is the why. So, it's easy to say, like, well, the state makes us do it, but that doesn't, the kid doesn't care about that. So, s- sure, the state makes us do it, and the state says that we have to have ninety-five percent of all of our kids, um, take the test, but why is it that we're taking it? What is it measuring, and why does it matter for them as students, and why does it matter for us as a school? Um, again, one of the things that we've talked about in the past is the discrepancy between how our students, um, perform on tests that are intrinsically motivating to them, like in AP exam, where we excel through the roof, and then we look at our CASP data, where we're always hoping that we can see improvements. And so, I think one of the things in talking with ASB that will be very important this year in our CASP campaign is really hitting on the why. Why is it important for us to be seen as a school that has really high marks compared to other schools in the region, in the state, in the country? Um, it may not go in your transcript when you're applying to colleges, but you better believe that colleges are looking at our school versus, you know, students at our school versus students at another school when they're applying to colleges, and the, the sort of quality that those schools are seen in, um, from those universities. So, um, we're really gonna work on the, on the why there. Um, in terms of some other things for CASP preparation, um, we have been doing the NW, um, NWEA, um, diagnostics, mid-year, uh, things, and we're gonna look at that data in just a second. We've completed School Day PSAT, uh, back in the fall. We're gonna be doing School Day PSAT, NMSQT, and, um, the School Day SAT next week, um, for ninth and eleventh graders, and then we will also be, um, we've completed the AMC Math, we've, uh, we talked about that in the last one. Um, and so, really, it's gonna be about our, um, our campaign that we're doing, um, to try to make sure that we're incentivizing it for students and making sure that they know why. And then, Remy, we heard you in terms of incentives. We know that students want to know what it is that they can be rewarded with if they perform well. Um, and so, we are gonna be, uh, rolling out very soon a couple of incentives. The, the things that we're talking about right now are things that students really care about, and that's parking and, um, off-campus, off-campus lunch privileges. Um, and so, some of those are gonna be just general, maybe more for attendance and behavior, and some of those are gonna be tied to the CASP. And so, I'm not gonna sort of roll it out tonight. I wanna, we want to fully flush it out and make sure that we can articulate it, um, but we have heard what students care about. And so, we will, um, be pursuing those things to try to encourage especially our juniors to test their best. Um, and so, stay tuned for hearing a little bit about those incentives as we start our CASP campaign a little bit closer to spring break. Um, in addition to those things, uh, we continue our student review process. Um, a lot of talk about what do we do for those students in the middle, um, as well as the students that are really struggling. So, um, we continue to, uh, monitor students that are really struggling. We looked at our five-week data with all of our teachers last week in our grade-level teams, and we've identified those students that need immediate intervention and are beginning to, um, create those meetings as we speak, um, where we will have dozens, if not close to a hundred, meetings again this semester, uh, working with those students and their families, trying to make sure that they get on track, um, to be as successful in school as, um, possible. Just one thing to highlight from the student review process in first semester, we did see, um, an eighteen percent drop in Ds and Fs, and a twenty-six percent drop in Fs alone from the five-week mark then to, um, where we saw things at the end of the semester. If you can turn the page to our NWEA data. On there, uh, and it's, one, a couple of things I want to highlight is that, um, reading is an issue, and we'll come back to that in just a second, um, but that our achievement is relatively strong, um, across the board, um, but it is the growth in some of the areas that is of concern. Um, and so, in science, for example, you know, our students achieved in the seventy-first percentile, um, but we're looking at a growth that was about fifty-four percent. And so, we need to work with our science teachers to decide why it is that the growth was a little bit slower, um, than it was perhaps if you look up above in math, right? So, they achieved, um, in the seventy-third percentile, but we saw, you know, about eight, not, seven or eight points higher, um, in the growth metrics there at the sixty-one percent. As we turn the page to reading and to, um, language usage, uh, reading, uh, we're hearing it all night at every grade level. Um, i- it's not just here, it's nationwide. How, what is it that we're gonna do to try to deal with this? Um, one of the things that we've done so far, uh, this, we just started rolling this out right prior to, um, winter break, and then since we've returned, is we've been at leveraging our academic coaches, our, our technology academic coaches, um, and they've been visiting our PLCs, and I'm gonna talk a lot more about PLCs and how they're gonna help with this process in a second when we get to professional growth. Um, but our academic coaches have been visiting PLCs on Wednesday morning, um, and they've created a gigantic toolkit, uh, broken down by discipline. So, they've gone to the math department, they've gone to the special education department, they've gone to the English department, um, who, you know, English is like, wait, that's all we do is teach reading, but, um, they went to them as well. And what they are doing with them is they've created a toolkit that is by each of their subjects, ways in which they can work on increasing literacy in their class. So, a math teacher, right, isn't gonna necessarily pick up a novel, but they can now look at this toolkit that, uh, Ms. Minikozzi and Ms. Legola have created for them and find ways, maybe in their warm-up, maybe in the types of problems that they're choosing, in classroom discussions, that they can then infuse higher levels of critical, um, well, reading and then critical thinking in their different disciplines without really changing what they're teaching. They're still dealing with their content standards, but they're looking at it in a way kind of back to what Dr. Hasty was saying in terms of depth of knowledge, is, is instead of like, if you, you know, for lack of a better phrase, like, just instead of two plus two, how can we create a word problem, make sure that we're reading and analyzing it? Um, and so, that's, they've gone into every single discipline, um, they're going even as far as into PE, and they're gonna be talking with all of our departments and have been about how it is that each department can tackle this situation, which is that our students are not reading at the level that we would expect for them to do. Um, and so, we're excited about that work, um, and it, that is gonna be ongoing, and that is one proactive way that we're doing what we can to try to tackle what we're seeing as, um, areas in reading that are not where we would like it to be. I will also point out in English that our growth is similar to science in terms of it's not, um, they're not growing at the same pace, um, that we might expect. Again, our achievement is, um, you know, closer to what we saw in the other disciplines in language usage, but again, as I mentioned, our reading is a little bit lower. If we turn, oh, my gosh, I didn't even have it up on the board. I'm so sorry. You guys can stop me and tell me. Okay, I know you have it, but sorry to the, I'm sure, millions of viewers out there breaking down my NWA scores. My apologies.
I'm enthralled.
Uh, okay, so, on our PSAT and, um, from the School Day back in October of 2024, um, so again, we had our eighth and ninth graders and our juniors take this, so you can see our breakdown here. Um, some exciting news from our two-hundred-and-ninety-enrolled juniors. Um, we had a lot of students experiencing really significant success. So, we had, um, in excess of thirty students, thirty, about thirty-two students that had scores of thirteen-hundred or higher, eight students of fourteen-twenty or higher. Um, and I, I cannot presage this exactly, but, um, I, I imagine that looking at some of these numbers, we're gonna have a similar number of, um, really impressive students for our, um, as we look at the National Merit Program next year, because we've had a lot of really high-achieving students. So, that's gonna be good news. Um, and, and kudos to those juniors that really tested really So that's gonna be good news. And kudos to those juniors that really tested really well in the PSAT. And then in the PSAT eight and nine, we did really well as well. And then I would also like to note, because I didn't, I just skipped it. Both the, we had one freshman and one junior that had perfect scores, which is, you know, obviously an incredibly outstanding. So we're very happy about that. And our eight and nine breakdown is strong, as you can see there from the data. Okay, transitioning to positive student behavior, supporting positive student behavior. I'm gonna probably, you have the charts here, and if you have specific questions, great. But Mr. Klosel did an amazing presentation on check-in and checkout, very comprehensive a couple of weeks ago. But it has been something that we're very happy about and to see the increase and improvement in both attendance and academics for the students that are participating in that. So we have a brief slide there for those. But again, you did just hear about that very recently. One of the things that we have heard from our staff in one of the areas of focus in terms of being able to support our students most effectively is making sure that we're communicating. What is a classroom-managed behavior? What is a administrative managed behavior? How does that flow of sort of passing off of responsibility happen? For a variety of reasons, it's so interesting. Everything old is new again. As we went more and more digital, we got feedback from our staff that it was more and more confusing for how they do behavior intervention and referral forms. So I just signed an order yesterday to go back to the triplicate form, carbon copy, baby. So we are taking it old-school, but believe it or not, it's, it's helping people feel like they have a little bit more control. They'll have a copy of what it is. We have some flow charts and a lot, we're rolling out a lot more with our staff sort of for what are the things that are appropriate that they should be handling and then really before it should be getting to an administrative level so that they have that autonomy in the classroom and then, and then also knowing when it's appropriate for them to get it to us. So we're kind of going back to the basics there to make sure that all of our staff knows exactly how it is that we can support them, support our students with positive behavior. Okay, this slide is very exciting. So one of the things that we're doing, and we'll, I'll talk again, like I said, in a second about PLC. I'll also talk briefly about RTI. Like some of the other schools, we sent some staff to an RTI conference, response to intervention, and we are bringing, those folks have come back and we're immediately beginning to implement that. We'll be talking soon about how we're gonna be using RTI in the classroom for instruction. But one of the first things that we've already started is how we're using RTI for some things as it relates to behavior. And a lot of that is with our restorative practices. And so one of the things that we are in our first cohort of is something we're referring to as our Upstander Academy. So when we identify students that are in this particular case, having a hard time stop not picking on particular students, whether you wanna call it bullying or just unkind behavior, we are working them through this Upstander Academy where we're bringing them in and they're working with several of our adults, Ms. Decatrelle, Ms. Dar, and they're working on life lessons and skills and activities, develop those skills. And then ultimately, the purpose of the academy is for these students to come together and discuss it with these adults, work through scenarios, come up with their own scenarios. And then ultimately, when it is that they have reached their, their personal goals that they set for themselves at the beginning, they can get out of that Upstander Academy. So we're very excited about it so far, and we're just gonna continue that work. We're also starting one, something, because one of the things we are constantly hearing is school culture and school spirit. And so we're starting something called Lunchtime Focus Group Discussions. And I wanna really credit several of our teachers, Mr. Castle, Chef Lees, and some others that are taking time out of their lunches to pull students in and have conversations with them and starting, in some ways, really easy. Essentially, and it kind of spoke to what you were talking about earlier about why students want to be in their seat in class. The focus of the first one is, is simply gonna be what makes you wanna go to class? What makes you wanna go to school? And really hear from the students and get their feedback about what it is that is successful in classrooms that they wanna be in? What is it successful about those students that really enjoy coming to school? And then we will be taking the information that we get from these lunchtime things and trying to share it out with our staff, with our ASB, with the general student body and parents, and really try to get towards some of the culture and spirit things that I know people are always hoping and looking for ways in which we can grow. So that's one thing that we're very excited about. And then one other thing, just I wanna highlight on this page is we are sending students tomorrow to a mediation conference. One of the things that I think is the most important thing for kids of all ages, but certainly with high schoolers, is for them to learn how to help each other solve their issues and their problems amongst their peers. And so we are sending some faculty and students, some of our Normanade Wellness peer counselors, as well as some of our service learning students are gonna be attending this tomorrow to bring back these practices so that kids can teach kids on how to do peer mediation to help, again, with campus culture and, and behavior and helping students sort of police themselves and also then be able to help problem-solve things amongst themselves before it gets to a point that it becomes, it feels impossible to deal with. Okay, attendance. We've really tackled this this year, and so we're very proud. So our, our goal is 95%. We're not there. We're at 94.32%. I will say that we've had some funky things happening. January and February hysterically, hysterically, and historically very low attending months. And we saw that this January as well with fires and all the kind of things. And so actually, our attendance awareness campaign in January got a little bit funky with all of that disruption and bringing in some new students into our school. But nevertheless, we are still celebrating those classes that did really well, and we just got that information. So attendance has been a big thing. So I'm gonna kind of, I'll, I'll mention it here and then we'll go to the data. We have fully implemented the SARB process of progressive interventions this year. We have been sending students to DART, which is the District Attendance Review Team. And it really isn't intended to be punitive. It sounds scary. But we have students that don't come to school, and we know that they can't learn if they're not in school. And so we are really working hard to make sure that we're following through the processes that Ms. Collins Williams and her department have helped put in place and, and tried to do it with fidelity and get as many of those students through the process. Our SROs have been wonderful. They've been meeting weekly with students in conferences and following up after SART and DART meetings, the student review meetings, to really try to have an, an all-encompassing, not just the school, not just the parent, but the city. And, and law enforcement is showing them that it matters to everybody that they come to school. If you go to the next page, here is our sort of attendance numbers in the pie graph. Couple of things to note. We have 65% of our students that are meeting exceeding 95% so far. We have 22% of our kids in the yellow area, which they're between 90 and 94%. So the vast majority of our kids are coming to school almost all the time. It's really that chronically absent group that is relatively small that we want to, that we are tackling through the SARB process. And we hope to get that 13% number further down, because we need those kids in school so that they can be successful. I do wanna shout out that it looks, by this data, that we have about 192 students that have had 100% attendance, which is pretty astonishing. I didn't click. I'm the worst. Remy, your job is to yell at me, okay? It's your one chance. On the next slide, it breaks it down by grade level, so you're welcome to take a look at that. And on the, the following slide after that, it breaks it down from our subgroups. The, the one of greatest concern is our EL population. And that's why we are continuing some of our work with our counseling department to target specifically and intentionally ways to bring our EL students onto campus to get them involved in things other than class, where we know that it, it may feel alienating while you're still learning the language. And so how can we make these students feel welcome, comfortable, get them involved in activities on campus beyond just the classroom? And so we see that number for our, some of our limited English-language proficient students, and it's an area of concern. And so we're just gonna continue in that work as well. And finally, growing and developing professionally. We had, we are, it's, it's a busy week. We are in the middle of our WASC accreditation process, which is the Western Association of Schools and Colleges. Thank you again to the Board of Education and District Leadership for attending our welcome evening with them on Sunday. They've just completed day two. They have met with students. They have met with students formally and informally, walking around campuses, going to classrooms, as well as in specific focus groups of students. They've also talked with certificated staff, classified staff. They've met with administration each morning. And as they speak, they are very busily preparing their report to share with us tomorrow. Our last full visit was in 2019. And so we are excited to hear what they have to offer us tomorrow in both their areas of strength that they recognize, as well as the areas that they would like to see improvement. One of the things that's always important is, is that we hope that the areas of improvement that they identify mirror the areas of improvement that we self-identified in our report. And so we'll find that out tomorrow. But early indications would say probably will be pretty aligned with the things that we believe that we need to be working on and that they find while they're here on our visit. One of the things that I am most excited about this year is the work we're doing with our PLCs. And I've said it to this group before, it is, we started further behind than some of the other schools in this work, but we are getting caught up. High school is an interesting thing because so many of our teachers teach so many different preps. We have so many teachers that are in singleton situations, meaning they're the only teacher that teaches what they teach. And so finding ways to make sure that this PLC work is authentic and effective is, is hard enough, let's say, in a math department where you have teachers with, you know, multiple different things that they teach, but then also for your singletons. The good news is, is that we took a large group of staff that we see in the picture there on, on the top right to the PLC at Work Conference again in November, and they came back super jazzed. I came back learning all of the ways in which I fumbled the ball out of the, out of the gate this year. I'm gonna mix metaphors, to start the year in our PLC work. And so the good news is I got to go and get a refresher and kind of a reset. The teachers went and got super excited. And the, the only way in which PLCs work is when the teachers take ownership over the process and the teacher leaders step up to help lead in that work. And that is happening. This incredible group of educators up here, Ms. Legola, Cassandra Chavez, Ms. Neelis, Ms. Chicorello, Ms. Brukeem came with us to the PLC conference. They have now started what is the Guiding Coalition or what we are calling the Learning Cadre. And they are now being responsible with Ms. Cabelas and I as advisors, really taking this work seriously and then going and, and beginning these conversations again with their departments. And so what our hope and what our goal is with this PLC work is that we're gonna now say, okay, we have ideas as an administration for how we can improve our reading scores. Okay, we're working with our coaches. We're gonna ask them to go to the departments with this, these strategies and these toolkits. Now, in your PLCs, you need to help us, not just English. It is not just the English teachers responsible for reading. It is not just the math teachers responsible for math. How is it that in our PLC work, not only are we going to find and identify those students that are struggling, how are we gonna push the students that are excelling? How are we gonna reteach? How are we going to do expansion exercises? But how are we also gonna support the initiatives like we, where we see in our data as a whole school where we're struggling, or if not struggling, at least not doing as well as we believe that we should be? I talked about RTI a little bit ago, and that was another one, sort of as Ms. Ellerby said. We're very excited that we didn't just go to these conferences, but we're coming back and instituting the things that we learned there right away and are continuing to grow on that. And then the Danielson Framework. We're in year one, and I will say that it was a little clunky to start as we got the software working and things like that. But it has really created, I think, meaningful conversations with the, the people that have been on cycle this year. We're still in the middle of that process, but it, anytime you do something for the first time, like the old evaluation coaching process, whatever you wanna say, it was like I could kind of do it in my sleep. So we, as administrators, are, are learning this new process. The teachers themselves are learning it. But part of, actually, the nice thing about fumbling through it this first year together is that we're having really good conversations about how we make it as meaningful as possible. So I would say it's underway and we're happy with the direction that it's going. And we know that it's only gonna get stronger from an evaluation and in particular, a coaching model. Ms. Cabelas made sure I brought visual aids and I forgot. One of our incentives will continue to be our cords for graduation with the pin for the students that are excel on it. So I will wear it, hoping that I did enough to at least wear a cord tonight. So that is the presentation for Beverly Hills High School, and I would be happy to have any questions you may have.
I wanted to say what a great report he went through so much, and it was very informative. A part of those WASC, the WASC visit, they had, they pulled some ASB students out and spoke to us about our experience at Beverly. And one of the main things all the students spoke on was how academics such a big part of our school and how that's our strong suit. And WASC even was saying like how, yeah, like we can tell how academics is very strong at Beverly. And that really shows in our PSAT scores and our AP scores. And I always hear about the different APs at least I'm taking as well. Like the teachers always say, I have had like a 100% pass rate for the past like two, three years and so on. And it's unbelievable how our school is doing so well in the many different AP courses we offer and the two new ones you're, we're adding as well to next year. It just shows how our students have so many different opportunities and they still are able to succeed in all of them. So I applaud you on all that and congratulations, just great job.
Can I make a point there? And thank you for saying that. One of the interesting things that WASC said that I, the feedback that we heard from the students was that we always in like pep rallies and stuff, like celebrate athletes and things like that, but less so our academics. And like, we often will present it to the board. And that's a really important thing for us to remember. So I will ask ASB to partner with us in finding ways, whether it's in rallies or different ways to highlight those successes like we would, you know, traditionally with sports or things like that. And so I think, thank you for saying that, but I also loved that piece of what we heard from WASC after you, after the student spoke about how it is that we can pump that up and make that more of a culture amongst all of the students on our campus. So it's kind of infectious. I think that's a really good idea.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you so much for a fantastic presentation. You, you, you just mentioned sports there a second ago, so I apologize to ask a question that's not a part of your slides.
No problem.
But is there any correlation to grades and athletics? Are, are people participating in athletics, seeing better grades, average grades, lower grades?
Typically, I mean, ACIF rules dictate that you, it's not a super high bar, but you have to have like a 2.0 for academic eligibility. But I would, I would say in general, in athletics, like a lot of our other extracurriculars, the students that are engaged in those things tend to perform better academically as well. And it's, it's kind of interesting too. It's a lot of times very sport-dependent. Like you'll end up with certain sports that students are also excellent, like cross-country, for example. Like that's, it takes a special type of kid, and it also tends to be a student that's also really strong academically. But generally speaking, yes, across the board, not just for the carrot of like the eligibility piece, but it's all about budgeting time and it's all about commitment and like sort of managing your resources. Which time is one of those things. So in general, yes, I would say that our athletes tend to be more successfully, more successful academically.
Thank you. And just fantastic job that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. You're on your way.
Yes, we're, we're getting there. We're, we're, yes, we're working on it.
Yeah, I feel like there has been so much fine-tuning and progress in the last two years. And I know that high school is a bit of a jungle, so thank you for tying it all in. We spoke last year about, like you guys are focusing on those with the Ds and the Fs and you're pulling them up.
Right.
So I'm assuming it's, it's working based on the numbers you provided. Do you think it would be a good idea to broaden that count so that it's whoever has below a 74%? You're reaching down into them or how, what are your thoughts about expanding that and pulling more kids up?
Yeah, the, so and I know that that was a topic of a conversation last year. And I think, I guess I would answer it a couple of ways. The immediate answer is that the human resources piece of it is a little bit finite. Because we're spent, you know, we're administrative, you know, it's an administrator and a counselor having these meetings with these folks, which is time well spent, but it is time. And so I, what I would say is, yes, and we're always looking for. And I think that's one of the ways in which the PLC work, when we really get that going, is gonna, that's gonna happen in the classroom. We're gonna need to have less dedicated, like, sort of like break glass in case of emergency-type interventions with those students that are maybe in the low 70s. And instead, we will be really doing good work, and that's the goal of, of the PLC, of, of the teachers and like subjects looking at the teachers and like subjects, looking at their data, looking at their informal, you know, their summative assessments, their formative assessments, and then fine tuning that sort of first best instruction, as well as the remediation in the classroom to find that student that's kind of on the bubble, so to speak. So, that is a longer-term piece, that hopefully PLCs will be taking care of some of that naturally, when our teachers are starting to have those conversations even more robustly than they've already started. The other thing I will say is that hopefully, and again, this is one of those things that we'll see a little bit more longitudinally, as those students that we're being able to pull up out of the lowest rung, so to speak, will see success, that hopefully that success will just both continue, but also as we have to spend less time with students, hopefully that are in that D and F range, it will free up more human resource time to be having conversations with the kids that maybe have Cs everywhere, you know, and saying like, you're, you're not, it's not terrible, but like, we see a ton of potential and it might just take a tweak or two. So, I don't know, it's kind of like a multiple answer to that, but I hope that kind of makes sense.
How, how do the high school kids prepare for the NWEA? Like, for example, let's say you're a ninth grader, and you're gonna take the English NWA next Friday. So, is, are there packets? You know, it's hard to get information from high schoolers.
Yeah.
So, what is, what is, what is the educator tasked with between a month before the NWA? Is it just the curriculum? Is there no?
It's not really teaching to the test as much as it is focusing on the, sort of the skills that they know, like, let's say, English for example, math too. Focusing on the skills that they know will be coming up on those tests, and then, again, just trying to use the best instruction that they can in the class. It's not, it's not so much like an NWEA crash course, because again, this isn't really, the hope and goal of NWEA is to really sort of authentically assess where the student is at in their learning in the curriculum.
Yeah.
So that teachers can make tweaks, with the ultimate goal also of like them performing better on casp. It's, it's less like you would be cramming for an SAT.
Yeah, I mean, and I meant to ask Mr. Waters this also, but I do think that that's in, hi, Mr. Waters, something that, you know, parents, maybe not as much in the high school level, because at that point, you know, either your student has the ambition or they don't, and you're just nudging them along until they're 18, you know, and they mature and so on. But even at, at the middle school level, send those packets home, you know what I mean, in the month leading up.
And we used to give out SAT, like PSAT packets, so I hear you loud and clear, and that's something we will look into, whether it's digital or hard copy resources, and for any of the things where it's, it's available, we'll look at sending that home.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's how to Mrs. Sabog's point and Dr. Stern's point about, you know, looping the families in, we won't be able to help you unless it's concrete and it's in our hands.
It makes sense.
But if you, if you send them home, at least we can nudge you a little bit.
Again, that's one of those things that have like changed over time, especially as we've gone so digital.
Digital, I know.
Is, because we used to get boxes and pallets of these test prep books, and we would send them home, and some didn't make it home, but, you know, we at least sent them home. So, we can, we can certainly look into that for the various things.
I leave it up to you, but I feel like we're, we're trying to leave no stone unturned, you know?
A hundred, as much as the parents want to support it home.
I personally believe that putting pen to paper is really helpful for retention and processing and recall.
Yeah.
I know some people might disagree with me, but I, I really do believe that, which is why I get the whole thing printed out and I write it down. I just would say tap into the parent community from sixth grade to 12th grade, send that stuff home, let us support you guys, you know? It's not making its way. We get the emails, which are quite informative, this is happening, but, but I'm, I don't think that we're necessarily the teacher's and the staff's partner in that achievement piece.
I hear you.
Can I talk, I love to talk about this stuff.
Sure, of course.
I was gonna tell you right now, and you know, when we talk about pen and paper, and I, it's a strategy. And again, you're having a student demonstrate knowledge in real time, whether it's through a computer software or, you know, through pen and paper, pencil and paper, but it's really important for the first part to engage with the differentiation of the strategies, so that's critical. And I, I love what I'm hearing here, because we get to that first part, the next part, when there, we're implementing the different strategies. Then we get into the formative assessment, and that's what great teachers are doing. They are, you know, working, having that formative assessment, whether it's in real time, to see how they need to mold the strategies and possibly change the curriculum, you know, mold the curriculum. And the other thing about NWEA that I, this is, so then it goes up to another tier. So, right now with NWA, we're at benchmark assessments. So, we're going to like, looking at, okay, we got through our, I wanna say five to six weeks, I can't remember the week, but you would usually take that math or English test, and now the teachers can take back that, those strands, to see not only are they meeting a certain standard, but it also helps them with their pacing. And so, that's what the value of NWA, and of course, then we get into our summative assessments, and those are these bigger ones. But I just wanna say, really, what we're talking about here is such a high level, and it's just so much, like, much higher level than most schools I've seen, and I really appreciate it.
Okay, so it's getting late, but I wanna just make some concerns that I have.
Sure.
So, the Danielson program, high school is a different, the students are evaluating the teachers more than the teachers evaluate the students in the middle school. So, in the middle school, the teachers are on top of the students and for, you know, pushing them along. In the high school, my concern is that a lot of the students that are very, very serious, honor students, you know, great in academics, are evaluating the teachers that are not particularly teaching them, and they're getting frustrated. So, the Danielson program, I wanna know, is it helping? Have we started it in the beginning of this year? And again, when are we gonna get the reports on it? Because we're already end of February, so for me, it's kind of scary, because we wanna know what's happening, because it's about accountability. So, that's, that's my concern. And then, I also wanted to ask you in regards to WASC on Sunday.
Yeah.
My concern was, there weren't many families there, many parents there. Who was in charge of the invitations of the family?
So, WASC typically asks for about that number, much bigger than that, and it gets a little bit unwieldy. So, that was actually the, kind of their target number that they suggested, and then I worked with our PTSA presidents to reach out and help recruit some folks to come.
Okay, because my concern is that it wasn't diverse enough.
Okay.
And I think a lot of parents had no idea about it. I think it was, I don't think, I know, that their invitation came out, I believe, Monday for some groups of parents, and then Friday, it was on Sunday, so Friday, another, I guess, group of parents, I'm not sure exactly.
Okay.
And then it was on Instagram or something like that, the day before. People were frustrated that they didn't know about it, so they already had other things going on. So, that's just another thing that maybe we should make sure to be aware of, because it's important. And then, in regards to the EL students, you were saying that you're having a difficulty, you know, difficult time having them come to school or being involved?
In terms of their attendance, it's one of the subgroups that we're most concerned about in terms of chronic absenteeism, and so...
So, okay, so let me ask you, is there a mentor program with the EL students where, because they don't know the language, so they're having a difficult time, and of course, if you don't understand, you, you, especially high school students, that's very difficult for them. So, is there some kind of mentor program where another student can be with them in certain times and take them to sport events, or speak to them and mentor them? Because I saw it happening in the elementary school, there was, you know, a Korean boy that within two months, he, he spoke English like really fast. So, I'm just curious, if that's something maybe we can implement, so we can have our EL students have...
Yeah, so we, we've, it's been a major point of emphasis for us over this last year. Mr. Sanchez, who's one of our newer counselors, has kind of taken EL as one of his main areas that, that he works with. And so, he's having special lunchtime talks for them, ways to get involved at school, connecting them with other students, having other students there to help support them, as well as, he's working with Cindy Dubin, our career advisor. She's been hosting specific career sessions for those students to, to help them also understand and sort of work on planning their long-term goals. So, we have certain things in place, which...
Maybe if we have like, or maybe ASB, or maybe certain students will get extra credit or something to receive to help mentor.
Absolutely, yeah, we can always, certainly look to new ways to, to support them even further, but like I said, it has been a point of emphasis, and we've seen a lot of success from it. We also have a new ELC, English Language Coordinator this year, and he's doing really good work. And so, we're seeing positive gains, and so, I don't want the one, I, I'm not gonna hide that we're worried about that attendance for that one subgroup, that's why I pointed it out, but I don't want that to, to sort of cloud that we're doing, I think, actually a lot of good work of integrating them in ways that we had not before, to make sure that we're programming specifically for them, to help acculturate them and make them feel like they have a place on campus.
Yeah, it's important, because if they're not coming to school, that's like, that's devastating, yes.
And just contextually, oh, you know, and again, it's something we can look into, into planning going into the next year, but some, a lot of high schools have buddy programs. And so, you, you would buddy like the freshmen, incoming freshmen, they would come in, maybe that summer for orientation, then we would bring the older seniors or juniors, and then you could pair them up. And that is a great program for juniors and seniors to have on their college resume, and it wouldn't be just focused on ELs, it could be something we could look at over, uh, school-wide.
That would be fantastic. Thank you so much.
Of course.
I'm just, I'm just in awe of all that you told us and shared, and I just see the hard, hard work, and I really appreciate that. It feels like we're in a really good place at this point, and I know that we'll see how, how it turns out with the testing, but it sounds like everything's really going well overall. Thank you so much for your, and I think you definitely earned that little cord there.
Awesome, and it's, and it's not just me, like, my, my team is sitting behind me.
Yes, all of you.
I wanna shout out Kim and Phil and Shannon, they're doing incredible work, and our teachers too, our counselors. It really is a, a team effort, and we're all, I think, kind of re-energized by this PLC work and looking forward to ways in which we can continue to improve, but thank you.
I also like the, the layer of kind of post-secondary flavor that you guys have added, like the seminar that you spoke about, and then I know we're increasingly doing more work with Santa Monica College, like, so that they can earn college credit, and that's all really great stuff. And I know that also factors into ratings, but it's also very appealing, because there are some kids who need that extra challenge or, you know, to level up. They've exhausted like all the math, let's say, that's offered in, in the school, and then they can go to Santa Monica College. So, I really applaud and encourage you guys to continue partnering with, with post-secondary programs and, and doing that sort of thing, because I think that really, really helps us, so, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, it's exciting to get the kids exposed to it.
Well, again, in the interest of time, I'm going to make my comments very brief, but I just wanna thank you for that very comprehensive report. It was amazing, and everything that's going on for the students at the high school, I don't know how you keep up with everything that's going on, it's amazing. I would, was, one question, on the Science Olympiad, did you see an increase in the number of students this year who had entries into the science? I've always been a little bit disappointed in the number of high school kids, because it's voluntary, and, and the teachers don't, I don't think they make it big an issue of it. It's more about whether they really have an interest in a subject that they really would like to do research on, and it's really a science project.
Yeah, so to, to kind of clarify, so that we have like the Science Fair and then the Science Olympiad. So, the Science Olympiad team is kind of like Academia, it's a team of students that come together as an extracurricular and compete in regional competitions, and that's a little bit more almost similar to Academia of like content-based. And then we did have the Science Fair, and I would say that next year, we've, we've started conversations with our science department about really wanting to try to promote that to get some more, I mean, like, 'cause all, you know, all we have to think about is like the untapped resource that is like our MSA program, right? And so, really, our, we do, 'cause I agree with you, we would love to push students to have more entries into a Science Fair as well.
I, I would love to see that it go up, because I think that's where the kids can come up with some unbelievable ideas.
Absolutely.
And, okay, and the other thing is, is I've always been on the kick about the Santa Monica City College situation, and the fact that so many kids going through high school automatically say they're gonna go to SMCC, and that bothers me because of their, begin, getting what we call college-ready, and I sometimes feel they miss the both. Okay, even if you don't go there, but get all the work that you can to become college-ready. And some kids take the easy way and don't do that, because they're gonna go to Santa Monica City College. And it bothers me that they don't apply to four-year colleges, because I like to know that after they apply, that they are ready and they get in, if whether they can't go there for financial, whatever reason, doesn't bother me, but I, I worry about the number of kids that don't make an attempt to get into the four-year colleges.
Well, and I would, and we may be saying the same thing, but I would say, in some ways, it's almost worse, because there are kids that kill themselves and take a million AP classes and are incredibly successful and put themselves in position to attend really good four-year schools and don't even apply. And that breaks my heart almost as much as the student that comes in with that sort of closed mindset that I'm going to Santa Monica from before they step foot on campus. And so, I agree with you, Ms. Marcus, but I'll say this as well.
I can understand that problem, yeah.
It's an identified area of growth for us, it's, it's something that frankly keeps me up at night, and I think it's, it is something that we need to work on, and I think, I have to give our teachers credit, I believe that our teachers prepare our students very well to go to a four-year school. And I think this is something in the board you will often ask about ways in which you can support, as we are all ears to try to figure out some way that we can talk about this with the community where it doesn't feel judgmental, because families can, can make decisions for themselves, like, it is not my place to tell a family what it is they believe where their student, whether it's financially or whatever, where they believe their student should go. But I do think that in our, in this particular community, there is a gap between how our students achieve and where it is they apply and go. It doesn't mean that they don't transfer after a year and, and go and do amazing work. So, I know we wanna try to collect that cohort data if, if that's possible, but additionally, however it is that we can try to have honest conversations with the community about whether it's even just applying, you may choose not to go, but don't close doors for yourself. I, you know, I had a student athlete in my previous life as a coach and teacher in my last school, and, you know, wasn't gonna go to college, wasn't gonna call to, and then, yeah, the heck of a senior year in soccer, finished second in the county in goals, and all of a sudden was getting scholarship opportunities that he couldn't go to college because he didn't take care of business in the classroom before that. And he'd, so he closed those doors for himself that, that came at the very last second. And so, you know, that's something, it's something that I'm very passionate about, and I'd love to continue to partner with you in a way that, that does it and tries to raise that awareness while still being respectful to our community, where, you know, there is a particular culture around sort of where it is our families wanna go.
I, I appreciate what you're saying, and the only thing I'm saying is that people say, well, why isn't Beverly Hills High School rated higher?
That's one of the biggest contributors.
And that's one of the criteria for why we are where we are, is because of the number of students that don't, I mean...
It's one of the biggest.
If you get in, we, you know, even if they apply and they get in and they don't go, it's like you just said, I agree with you, but I want them to apply just so that we can get those numbers up of the kids that get in, and whether they go or not.
So, I hear you, and I will, Mr. Naggersmith, if you've not had a chance to meet him, he's our, our new college counselor this year, he is young and he is enthusiastic, and I will bring this back to him and see what we can do internally, just to start to, to really try to raise that awareness and make sure that students are clicking that submit button. And then, you know, hopefully we can also have a larger, you know, sort of conversation with the community, but I, you and I are very aligned in that goal.
Can I ask you?
Thank you so much, and I appreciate, and in the interest of time, I think I would like...
Just really, really quick, is there any way to figure out the students that can apply, let's say, to Harvard, and we help them apply to Harvard, even if they don't wanna go there, maybe they can apply, get accepted, and then they can change their mind and say, wow, I got accepted to a school that's very difficult to get accepted to?
Absolutely, and I, yeah, I think that's kind of what we're talking about.
So, maybe we can direct them to that direction, and then see the difference.
Absolutely.
There's a problem with doing that, don't you? All right, thank you.
Am I dismissed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, LC, no, we're done? That's what we had to do? It says something about that, okay.
All right, I'm, I'm loaded up. Okay, we have arrived at, we'll go back to my... We have arrived at...
Um, the planning and facilities, I would like to have a motion, or I'll make a motion for the approval of Amendment Number Seven to contract with RMA Group for Testing and Inspection Services at Beverly Hills High School, B3, B4.
Can I, can I, I have questions.
Yeah, so we...
We have to have a second.
Well, I second.
Thank you, now, go ahead.
I wanna know who did the proposals, and have we seen other proposals from different... I want to know who did the proposals, and have we seen other proposals from different companies?
I, I don't have that answer right this second, but I can get that to you, and I can send it to a board memo.
Okay, because I'm familiar with that company, and it concerns me, because the price is very high, and maybe the price is right.
Yeah.
But I'd like to see, you know, the details in the, in the proposals.
Okay, yes, so we will get that to you.
Okay, thanks.
Do you want to, well, call for the question? Does anybody else have a comment on that? Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Four and O, because Julia stepped away. All right. I'm going to call for a motion for the approval.
I'm sorry, so, that was.
Four, I gave four.
Right. Sagali, are you?
Can we pull it so I can see what's going on with that? Because it's like almost $200,000.
And what is your concern with that?
It's, it's testing. So basically, what it is, it's testing the anchors. It's, I don't know if you want to explain more, and it's a company that is charging us. So, we, there are several companies that we can hire, and I just want to know.
So, I, I know the process. We're following Cupca guidelines with the thresholds, and so I know we're within procurement, within the thresholds of the, of the law. I, I know that for a fact, because I know Amin Fonder Solari works with the procurement piece of this, and we are always on it with that. One thing I would very much caution us against, any pause on this, I can get you the information, and I'll explain how the procurement works in this case, and how this selection was made for this vendor. And I know it was done in compliance, and I'll, yeah.
Well, the reason I say is because I've been through this before. So, I know what they do, and I know how they charge, and it can be negotiated in other company, every company charges completely differently. So, that's my concern. I don't want to stop anything, and I know they need to do the testing, and the inspection needs to go on.
Exactly.
But in the future, can we please see it before we can approve it?
Yes, it's just unfortunate timing right now, because I don't have Will Carrot either at the CASH Conference, which is a statewide conference for bond program people right now, and construction people. So pretty much everybody in the state is at this conference. But I will have them come back, and they will more than happy to come back to this and explain it. But I would highly recommend that we motion to move it forward.
Can I make a question about, if we were to pull it and wait though, would it affect the timing and going forward?
That's, I, I'm very concerned it would, because we are on a tight timeline with all construction.
When is the inspection, do you know?
I, I will have to find out.
Okay, so, basically, the timing, okay, so they're basically going there, they're checking the anchors, they're checking what's going on, they're just seeing if the contractor's doing his job.
Correct.
Okay, so, when are they scheduled to do that? Are they scheduled?
I'm looking at the document right now, and it says dated February. I don't know if, I don't know if they're scheduled yet, but I'll find out.
Okay, so, if, if we, if we pull it, I don't know if it'll, if it'll stop anything, because it takes a lot of time for them to even do what they need to do.
Hold on, one second, I want to check, is Will Cur, is Mr. Curt on Zoom? He might be on Zoom right now, so we can possibly pull him in.
She's trying to unmute him.
Is Will Carrot on Zoom?
Yes, he is.
Okay, let's have Will Carrot, is Will, Will?
Will, can you hear us? You're breaking up. See if we can get him. You're still breaking up. I will speak. If we're doing an amendment, the procurement has already happened, and we've gone through the process, and we're adding amendment to change the current and existing contract. That is my understanding, but I'll wait till Will jumps on there, so. I don't know if Will heard me, but I know that's most likely the right answer I'm giving. You're still breaking up. Where, where's, he's trying to get in here.
In the meantime, at least the rationale does remind us that we are going to finish on time. So, notwithstanding the additional work, which makes me really happy. Right, so basically, what it is, is the inspectors, we are hiring inspectors to come out there and test the posts, the anchors, the reinforcement concrete, the welding. They're testing to make sure that the contractor has done what he's supposed to do, so that we can pass inspection. And is it requested by the engineer that we have to abide by these inspections, or are we doing it just out of our own free will?
No, we would, these are all required. I'm positive they're required.
They're required, okay. So, them being required, so the only, I'd just like to see the oversight of, you know, the cost, and if we got other proposals, because every single, because I'm familiar with this company. Every single company is completely different.
Understood.
So, that, that's just my concern.
Yeah. So, so typically, we would do the full procurement within the confines of the law, and then as we, we'd bring amendments back. Again, bond programs do it differently in different districts. This is the process that we followed over the years, and we bring amendments back to add as needed to the current contract, so we're not going through the complete procurement again. But as I understand, the procurement's been done, but we'll definitely bring this back.
Yes, so, in the future, like, like I said, in the future, if we can see this, if we can see this before it comes to the board for approval, that would be great.
Understood. Yes, we can do that.
I'd like to also point out that this is an amendment to a previous, with the contract from the beginning.
Correct.
That's another thing I'd like to point out, that they have been with us since the beginning. So, if you're looking at a different vendor now, it may create a delay in our construction, and that would not be something that.
RMA did testing previously.
Yeah, if we have amendments, they've been with us and working with us, and remember.
On this project?
Yeah, so they've been with us since, so, just sorry to give you a heads up. So, always you can look at the prior page, like, in here, it's called the rationale, and they usually create the roadmap of where we've been, and where we're going, and, and the why of it.
But sometimes, when they do do the previous job and they continue with us, then they feel free to charge whatever they want to charge, to a point.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. Here, it's explaining that due to accessibility issues within the buildings, as well as changes and additional tests due to DSA comments. So that means the state is coming back to us, driven by the existing conditions in the field. Final discovery of the remaining structural issue, issues was delayed. These issues have been resolved, and there is a clear path to move forward to complete the project within the allotted timeframe. This added cost accounts for the remaining special inspections of the structural steel and fasteners required for the building to resolve the structural complications of the building. I will just say one thing, after having worked with Will and the Fonder Solari team in the last couple of years. As an example, the Fonder Solari team gave an estimate of what the tennis courts and upper athletic field, what, where the bids were going to come in, and they were basically, they estimated it correctly almost to the dollar. And so, I hear where you're coming from, that this is a lot of money going out. But I would say that in the last two years, we've had a really amazing team advocating for us.
No, I don't doubt that, yeah. I'm really happy with them. The, I just have a concern that, is this a correction, or is this ongoing, like, in inspections?
It's ongoing. We could have another finding through DSA, or somebody that wanted us to come in. I mean, this happens with, we have environmental audits, all different types. So things do happen during construction.
Right.
Or throughout the phases of construction, where we have to bring people back over and over again, we'd have to do an amendment at that point to go about.
Yes, that, that I understand.
Also, since this relates to B3 and B4, I recall that when we were visiting it most recently, they kept explaining how they had to dig deep, and then dig deeper, and then dig deeper, and then lay in the concrete to be able to make it as safe as possible. That's one thing that I, you were not with us, Dr. Hasty, do you remember that they just kept explaining how we went then 20 feet, then 40 feet, then 60 feet? So.
So, did they have caissons, or was just anchors and footings? But, I mean, here it's just, yeah.
I just, I'm just saying.
Let me, let me speak to the process, though, because I think what I'm asking the board to give, to direct us, is to communicate in a different way. So you have this before we come to the board meeting, and so that's something we will definitely be revisiting and bring to you.
Yeah, so for instance, for example, let's say, you need to get the testing, you have a company, you have this price, but you have a different, you have other proposals also.
Correct.
If, if the construction company only works with RMA, that's also a little bit of a problem, because you don't have to do that.
Well, I would assume that these dollars are consistent with what they had been charging in the past, and, and more than likely what they, originally, there were bids out. So something tells me that this is probably consistent with past practices. I'm okay either way. I mean, I can wait on it, or we can.
Because it's not the construction, it's the testing. So it's not like the contractor's working, it's the company testing them.
I mean, I'm hesitant to delay it by two weeks, because I, we are up against our end of summer deadline.
Okay, so we'll just move forward, and from now on, we'll do it a different way.
Okay, if you want to do, but again, we can vote, and then, you know, a majority.
Yeah, in the past, Fonder Solari team and Mr. Curt have been here to present, you know, construction-related matters. I would say this is the first time I've experienced that they've not joined us. I'm sure something's going on.
Well, yeah, it's, it's the statewide CASH Conference today. So, I said, everybody that has to do this, you know, is there.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to call for the question, and if you want to vote, you can vote while you choose. Okay, I'll call for a roll call vote on this, then, are you going to vote no?
No, I'll vote yes.
Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. The motion passes five and O. Okay, I will now move on for the approval of the second reading of Board Policy 5111.1, District Residency. I made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. Any discussion? Now, remember, this is the second reading. Any discussion? No?
I just had a few very minor comments, Mrs. Collins-Williams, and thank you so much for your time on this.
You're welcome.
On the second page, in, in the middle, big paragraph, the superintendent or designee is authorized to require.
Yes.
I just wanted to ask you one question. It says, the last line, "In addition, students continuing from a district elementary school to the ninth, to the district high school shall provide proof of residency prior to the beginning of the ninth school year." We talked about doing it on an annual basis. Do you want to add also, like, in anticipation of middle school, or, or is that unnecessary, since now we're enforcing annual renewal?
I think, to be clear, we could change that line just to say, required to provide proof annually.
Great.
And that's what's been updated on our website and other items as well, I believe.
Okay.
But I know that my team and I had that discussion after our last board meeting.
I'm on, thank you. I think that's actually a great suggestion. I'm on page two.
You're on page two of it?
It's not, 5111.1, District Residency, page two, in the middle. It speaks about re-verification before moving to the high school, and Mrs. Collins-Williams simplified it further to say, every year, which is what we recently discussed. Great, thank you.
I apologize for not changing that before. It was already typed, but we will get it in.
Yeah, it says the same thing in a few different ways, so, thank you for that.
That is our practice, we were already implementing that for enrollment season right now.
Yes, I saw. Thank you so much. And then, on the last page, paragraph one, item one, "All families must provide accurate and up-to-date residency documentation at the time of enrollment and upon any material change in residence, in residence." Excuse me, then item two, "The district will regularly audit residency, et cetera." So then, I, I was thinking to myself, let's add annual here, but you already, we could have it in two places, I leave it up to you. Because now you added it in the prior, in the prior page. But if you want to have more clarity, you can also denote annual.
Sure, no problem.
So it could read, for example, "All families must provide accurate and up-to-date residency documentation at the time of enrollment, comma, upon any material change in residence, comma, and on an annual basis." Okay, great. Then, I just wanted to let you know that in paragraph two, 2.4 on the last page, the reference to surreptitious photography, et cetera, I saw it earlier. So I only raised that to your attention, that you could leave it out if you don't want to, if you want to make the whole thing shorter.
I think it's because we're talking about specifically what the investigator can and can't do in this particular part. We want to just be clear to, to everyone what the activities will and won't look like.
Okay, great. That was it, that's all I had. Thank you for your care in this one.
Does everybody accept those changes? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, call for the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't know if you're familiar with it, we can, there's five candidates listed, and you can vote for five on the 2025 Selection of Candidates for the California School Boards and Associations. I remember doing this almost every year, we never know any of them at all. Nobody knows who they are. There's dozens of names, but we just vote for all of them because we can vote for five. So, if you want to, I can call for the approval of this election. You want to wait and research them for next, and I would be well, otherwise, we can vote for all five.
Yeah, or not, or.
Well, we have to vote, you know, we got to do something.
Okay, let's do it, since there's five candidates and five spots.
There are five candidates, okay, I'll move for the.
I don't know.
I disagree.
Well, we could, we could opt out.
We're going to vote for people we don't know?
Yeah, we could opt out.
You can opt out.
Yeah, abstain. So if nobody makes a motion, then it would die, and we can move on.
Then we don't have any candidates.
We have plenty of others. Okay.
All right.
So, moving on.
Okay, okay, we're not going to make the motion. Okay, okay, we've come to the agenda hearing period, and I would like to make a statement. Good evening, everyone. Per the Board Bylaw 9323 about meeting, meeting conduct, we will be limiting all comments on any one item to 20 minutes. Since this is an item on the agenda, we are limiting the public hearing period to 20 minutes. Please, please be advised, open comment is in accordance with California Education Code 35145.5, which allows governing boards to establish reasonable regulations for public participation in meetings. Each participant will have up to two minutes to speak, and will be called in the order as received. If you wish to cede your time to another speaker, you must be present in person to do so. Please be reminded that the California Government Code 54954.3, the board cannot engage in discussion or respond to speakers during public comment, except for limited clarifications or directing matters to staff. We ask that all comments remain respectful, refrain from the use of profanity or yelling, and align with the district's professional standards, including Beverly Hills Unified School District's Board Policy 1313 Civility Policy, which promotes respectful communications and prohibits disruptive or inappropriate conduct during public meetings. Thank you for your cooperation. Now, we did have one person who had signed up to speak on an item that was on the agenda. Oh, thank you, just arrived, thank you.
It said two minutes, and this has 20 total, okay?
Yeah, I know, yeah. Okay, Mr. Michael Rizzoli, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay, you have two minutes to speak on an item that was on the agenda when I called on you during the agenda.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was going to be first up. It's only a little bit late, but I missed it.
Well, we're, I'm calling on you, you're welcome to speak, and you have two minutes.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. So my statement tonight, um, is focused on, um, the KBEV students as, um, with regards to, uh, Assistant Superintendent, uh, Dr. Horvath, and his behavior towards the students in his investigation and interrogation of the students. And that's always been my.
Go ahead.
That's always been my, my main focus in, in all of this Mr. Carey business is the focus of the best interest of the students and making sure that was first and foremost in everyone's mind. So because of his behavior, I feel like a public apology is in order to those students. And I'm going to read that right now. On behalf of this board and all who represent them, to the KBEV students, I'm sorry for the disrespect you have been shown by this administration. I'm sorry, Horvath, who's not here, was given the power to interrogate and privately bully you in his office, to push you to answer distasteful questions regarding the changes, regarding where you change your clothes and who is watching. I'm so sorry to the KBEV students that this board has allowed this to happen and still has not acted on it as far as I know. Maybe there's something, uh, as per usual that you're not telling me, but as far as I know, it has not been acted on. Um, I apologize to the KBEV students for a semester of broadcast study and student journalism that has been disrupted and quite frankly, quite frankly ruined by the adults that are supposed to care for and protect you, especially to the advanced class who were chosen to be part of it. I'm sorry to the, for the undue stress in the classroom and all you've had to endure as this drags on day after day. I'm sorry you've had it, had to.
I'm sorry, your two minutes are up.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry you've had to go through this and all the mental pain it has caused. And I'm sorry that you won't soon forget. An apology with a special shout out to Ava Wisman and Delara Yektifar for courageously facing your bully, Horvath, and telling how he cornered and aggressively questioned you as if you had done something wrong.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I want to be very clear right now. These students have done nothing wrong. Those two girls have done nothing wrong.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. And thank you, Dr. Stern.
Thank you.
Okay, I will now limit the next discussion, uh, since it's under the topic of, uh, the agenda item fourteen, twenty minutes. Everybody will have only two minutes, uh, and I'm going to start and I will go as far as we can reach on the twenty minutes. Gunner Wormsley, I'm calling on Gunner Wormsley. Is he here?
Yes.
Okay, and you are ceding your time to? Okay, you have four minutes.
So twenty minutes total for everyone here to all the agenda hearing, right? Okay, so I'm going to try to not take too much time.
Please speak into the mic. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, members of the board. Uh, I didn't want to say too much at first, but you know, I mean, after three board meetings and still nothing about Mr. Carey, it's kind of frustrating, not only because you guys can seem to find evidence, but also we're not doing anything in class anymore. You've heard my classmates, my friends, their parents, and even my parents. So maybe it's my turn to speak, you know? Today, I'm not here to give you some political argument for why Mr. Carey should be brought back. Most people have already done that and you didn't even listen. I'm here to speak honestly and from my heart. I hope you can understand that, but honestly, I don't think so. I've been in KBEV for four years now, eight semesters, actually, no, seven, because my teacher, my mentor and everything he's great for hasn't been brought back yet. At the beginning of my freshman year, I moved from Paris to LA. Uh, back then I didn't know English. When I arrived to the district, the first letters I saw were K-B-E-V. I joined quickly the program and I met Mr. Romeo Carey. I'm not going to make you a long description of him because you tell me I'm wrong through all your biased information. All I have to say is that Mr. Carey helped me get immersed into a new environment, America. If it wasn't for him, my English wouldn't be like this. So now I can talk to you in a language you understand. Or not, maybe I have to speak Japanese, I don't know. I'd like to tell, uh, I'd ask to tell you, I'd ask you to tell me what's happening, but you don't even seem to know for yourself. I mean, maybe you do, but for all of us here, it seems like you know less as they go by. Maybe it's because of his salary, but I think if you cared about that, you wouldn't have paid four people instead of one for six weeks. It's been two months since I've last seen Mr. Carey in the classroom. You can say KBEV has been slacking for the past few weeks, no normal update, no normal news, but I don't blame it on the students. I blame it on you guys. Come on now, two cells for almost six weeks. How does that even function? Do you guys even care? KBEV has been airing for sixty years now. Your little issues have to mess that up too, on top of all the education of the students in our class? This little investigation, that is useless, by the way, because it is led by a biased man, has given you no answers. Yeah, by the way, Mr. Carey never locked up someone in his office to ask questions. I can say the same for everyone else on the board.
Time, I'm sorry, sir, your time is up.
I have four minutes.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Come on.
I'm sorry.
It's on the screen.
Wait, where was I? Okay, secret camera. Yeah, right. That camera and the clock has never worked. It's the first thing he told us about on the first day of class. It was a little gadget that never even worked. You know, maybe Mr. Carey won't be back this semester, and that destroys me because I won't get to see my teacher before I graduate. But this isn't just about me. This is about the future of KBEV. My little brother and the rest of his friends that haven't graduated yet, Jason, Perry, they all still have to suffer the degrading situation of KBEV also. Mr. Carey has not only seen me, but also most of my friends grow through a high school, and he actually cares, not like you guys. He's been there where there were little situations, because he never liked to use the word problem. Because, yeah, there was never a problem, Mr. Carey, until you guys made up one. He built something bigger than the school. I mean, look at you, you can't even build the school. The built, the B-three building has been there for seven years and it's still not completed. Maybe you're jealous, or maybe you want to restrict the students' voices, but I mean, that's a little extreme, you know? You probably don't even care about what I'm saying anyways. You're sitting here describing your programs for three hours, then listening to the public comment that you moved all the way to the back and now restricted to twenty minutes? And you're hoping to make us leave. Guess what? We're here, we've been here, and we'll be here until we bring Mr. Carey back. Focus on the one great, great program that you have, which is actually working well, and try to bring it back to normal. Show us you really want what's right about Beverly. A simple four letters, K-B-E-V.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zach, Zachary Hassan.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'm going to try to make this quicker because, uh, I didn't know about the time restriction, but, uh, a couple of things. So I'd just like to, you know, I don't know myself, you know, but I'm wanting clarification because I've been hearing a lot of things about, you know, things take time, you know, there's liability concerns. But, you know, I know that when Mr. Mead had an investigation, he was, his investigation lasted, I believe, about a week, and then he was gone. And Mr. Carey's has been going on for eleven weeks, so I guess it only applies to Mr. Carey. And I know that. Oh, sorry. Um, yeah. And, you know, it seems like there's a new reason for Mr. Carey's investigation every week. You know, I don't know, apparently the most recent one seems to be cameras. On the first day of school, Mr. Carey told me that, told the whole class that there are cameras in the studio to make sure that nothing is stolen, because there have been some theft problems at BHHS recently, so I think it was a good idea. It seems that the only reason that this investigation is carrying on is because of some vendetta, and I don't think that's a good use of taxpayer money. And if you're concerned about liability, I would be concerned about, you know, eleven million dollars that was misappropriated, that should have been used to pay teachers. I'd be more concerned about all the other losses that you currently have against the district, you know? And another thing is that, you know, I can't speak for, you know, everyone else, but I can tell, but I can say that this is, that in Skills USA, even though there was a team that came, that went to nationals last year, they weren't able, they weren't able to place first. I can't speak for them, I wasn't on that team, but I know for me, it was a lot harder without Mr. Carey, and I know that it has been impeding students' ability to complete their work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have Mr. Preston Joseph, who's on Zoom. Is he available? Okay, I, Mr. Joseph, you have two minutes. We'll start the clock when you appear. Hello, Mr. Joseph, thank you for being here. You have two minutes, sir.
We're gonna pause it, we can't hear you, sorry.
I can hear him, I'm not sure I can understand him. I can hear you, I hope I can understand that. Okay, reset it. Please stay with us, we'll be right back with you. You'll get your two minutes, I promise. Okay, Oliver Al, Albu?
He's not here.
Oliver's not here. He left. Okay, Jared. Jared, you are, have two minutes. Are you conceding them to Jason?
Yes.
Jason, please step forward. You have four minutes, Jason.
Thank you. Evening, members of the board, Acting Superintendent Dr. Hasty. No matter where on the agenda public comment is, or how long we have to speak, we have been here, we are here, we will be here. Please listen to us. I am shocked by the resignation of Dr. Breggy as superintendent. I can think of only two reasons why someone resigns the position of superintendent of the most well-known school district in the United States. Dr. Breggy found a better job, that's number one, unlikely. Number two, Dr. Breggy was given the choice, resign or be fired. Did you push Dr. Breggy out? Did you banish Mr. Carey to the purgatory of administrative leave because you secretly intend to defund and dismantle the Career Technical Education Department? And neither Dr. Breggy nor Mr. Carey would sit silent and allow you to do so? Do you intend to dismantle the Career Technical Education Department and take the budget away from culinary fashion in KBEV? And move all of the money allocated to CTE to other departments and programs? Maybe you want to take the money to increase funding for athletics? Or expand the summer school programming, or to pay for transportation for students who want to participate in the dual enrollment program at SMC? Or expand grandparent permits, or to pay for unfunded mandates? All of these items are priorities for some of you or all of you. But none of you have said culinary or fashion or KBEV are your priority. If you folded CTE into other departments, where would that money go? Would fashion, culinary, and KBEV even exist anymore? Would a high school even offer students career technical education opportunities? I must remind you that not every student aspires to be the next LeBron James, Rick Caruso, or Bill Gates. Some students want to be the next Bobby Flay, Coco Chanel, or Steven Spielberg. What those students need is the career technical education programming. Please don't defund the CTE department. Students need the opportunities the CTE department provides to find their path. But maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I, what I just said is way off base. Maybe I just wasted my and your time talking about the CTE department funding. But if you continue to do nothing, the speculation will grow. Conspiracies, theories will grow, the distrust will go. I truly thought you as a board were going to end this saga with a decision by now, but you haven't. At the last board meeting, President Marcus said she thought the investigation of Mr. Carey should have been done by now, and that was two weeks ago. So why is there still no report? Why no conclusion? Why no closure? You as a board, you as administrators, are all mandated reporters. If you had any credible information or reasonable belief Mr. Carey engaged in inappropriate activities, you had a legal duty to report him. Yet I'm aware of no such reports being filed. The fact that no mandated reporter has reported Mr. Carey says one thing. Where there is no smoke, there is no fire. I'm disappointed that you have not completed your investigation. I'm disappointed that you seem to think changing the reason Mr. Carey is on leave to try to find a reason to fire him is the right thing to do. I'm disappointed you are okay with spending the money you are to keep Mr. Carey on leave. I'm just disappointed. It is not too late for you. You can be an inspiration. You can avoid being a disappointment. Do the right thing. End this almost three-month embarrassment of an investigation. If you have no proof, Mr. Carey should be fired. Bring him back. Do the right thing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Cohen. Deborah, you have two minutes.
Good evening, members of the BHUSD board. My name is Deborah Cohen and I'm a student in Beverly Hills High School and an advanced student in KBEV. I'm here tonight to once again address an issue that has remained unsolved for far too long. The removal of my teacher and mentor, Mr. Romeo Carey. Months have passed and yet Mr. Carey has not been reinstated. Despite his decades of dedication to this school and its students, he remains absent from the program He Grew, a program that is now struggling without him. We have waited for answers, we have waited for action, and yet the silence continues. I have told you once and I will tell you as many times as necessary, Mr. Carey is irreplaceable. KBEV is not the same without him. Part of the reason many of us joined KBEV was to have the privilege of learning from him through his unique techniques. His wisdom, guidance, and unwavering support have shaped generations of students. He does not simply teach us technical skills. He inspires us to pursue our goals with passion and determination. We are tired of waiting. We are tired of being ignored. Tonight, I'm asking, no, I'm insisting that the board acknowledges Mr. Carey's immense contributions to the school and takes immediate action to reinstate him. The students of Beverly Hills High School deserve an answer. Mr. Carey deserves justice. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Tina Wiener. Okay, we, okay, we have, okay, let's give him in then. Mr. Preston Joseph. Okay, hi.
Hi, wanna try this again? Can you hear me this time?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I'd like to begin by saying that breaking the tradition of holding public comments at the beginning of the board meeting and introducing time limits reads like an intentional roadblock to the community speech. It's particularly punitive to students who must now stay up very late to have their voices heard from those who should be eager to listen. Onto my initial topic. After watching the last board meeting, I sensed the all-too-predictable reflex response to the proposed Ethnic Studies class bubbling up, and I wanted to encourage the board and community to be open-minded to the idea rather than hunkering down into a position without employing genuine curiosity. I would love to hear discussion and debate on the merits of the curriculum rather than taking the lazy approach of calling it woke DEI brainwashing and critical race theory. We are much more complex intellectual community than that. Ethnic Studies is not DEI or critical race theory by definition, nor is it a Trojan horse for these concepts. Ethnic Studies is an academic discipline of deep analytical exploration of ethnic groups' histories, cultures, and contributions to society. While I'm sure you can identify intersections with the previous listed con- concepts, the purpose of Ethnic Studies is essentially about deepening students' understanding of how ethnicity influences people and society as a whole. This course can be an effective vehicle to teach one of the most difficult concepts, empathy. And Lord knows, the district could use a little more of that. I can already see the next headline about our wonderful district. BHUSD disregards the state mandate to provide ethnic studies in the midst of racial tension crisis. It is a disservice to our students to impulsively resist something that can be a positive because we are simply anti-anything someone perceives or labels as DEI. There may be legitimate concerns about adding this course, and once the curriculum is finalized, I hope the discussion focuses on specific concerns and balancing them with the likely benefits. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tina Wiener, please. What happened to the clock?
Where's the clock?
The other one.
I, I'm going to ask if I concede my time to Romeo Azavedo, since there's so little left.
Oh, I, well.
I don't think that there's going to be enough time for both.
Well, I don't have her name on the list. That's the problem.
Yes, I'm on the list, and last time you pushed me to the very end, and I think I deserve the respect to be able to speak right now.
Beg pardon? I do not have your name on the list.
Am I on the list?
I don't see, I don't see that being, I.
I'm further down on the list, and she's going to cede my time.
Wait, what?
I'm asking if I concede my time to Romy because there's so little time left. And so there's not gonna be enough time for.
Well, Romy is, but, yeah, but unfortunately, she's not on my list. But you can do it. So you can give her your two minutes.
That's what I'm asking.
Only two minutes.
That's what I'm asking.
But she, yeah, but she, oh, she's on the list, but it's in an order that they have to come. Okay. Giving it to her. Okay, fine. Thank you. I just don't wanna be unfair. Go ahead.
Are we jumping topics?
Go ahead. In this particular thing, it can be, it's under the, it's under the auspices of 14, which is just open public hearing.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Okay. Go ahead. You have two minutes.
Good evening, members. Good evening, board members, superintendent, and community members. I'm here tonight to express my deep concern and disappointment in the behavior of this Board of Education, particularly regarding two recent actions that undermine the integrity and professionalism expected from our district leadership. First, the poor judgment displayed in the handling of Superintendent Dr. Michael Breggy's resignation announcement is unacceptable. After eight and a half years of dedicated service through incredibly challenging times, Dr. Breggy deserved the respect of directly addressing the community himself. Instead, the board issued a communication on his behalf depriving him of the opportunity to personally express his departure on his own terms. The decision lacked transparency and professionalism, and it has left many in our community questioning the motives and leadership of this board. Second, the actions of newly-elected board member Russell Stewart are deeply troubling. His posting of the BHUSD logo with Doge written next to the letter D on social media is not only inappropriate and disrespectful, but it also appears to align with a political agenda that has no place in a public school district. More concerning, this post is a clear violation of multiple district policies and governance standards, including the Board Governance Handbook, Board Bylaw 9005 on Governance Standards, Bylaw 9010 on Public Statements, and Bylaw 9271 on the Code of Ethics. Even more upsetting is how this behavior is perceived by students. When my 14-year-old child saw the post, she said, "Tell him it is insensitive and disrespectful that we have a leader so immature that connects his personal politics to an education of growing children." My 14-year-old said that. She's absolutely right. Our students deserve leaders who set an example of maturity, respect, and responsibility, not those who make careless statements for personal or political amusement. Lastly, I want to take a moment to recognize Dr. Breggy for his years of unwavering commitment to this district. Regardless of differing opinions, his service deserves gratitude and respect. The way he has been treated in these final moments is disgraceful and dishonorable. I urge this board to reflect on these actions, hold each other accountable, and remember that your duty is to serve the best interests of our students and staff and the community, not personal political agendas. The trust of this community is fragile, and it is your responsibility to restore ethical and governance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Bahari Yaktifar. Bahari, are you here? I see you. Are you ceding time to Robbie? Is Robbie here?
I think you missed Jackie.
Huh? Jackie, well, I'll get these, oh. No, oh, Jackie, I'm so sorry.
Well, two and two.
Well, he has four. This will end it then, okay? No, no, he got, no, he got four.
Why would you cede two when I've been sitting here for almost five hours?
No, no.
Well, then why did you give everybody else time?
No, no.
Don't change the rules.
No, 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 I'm not changing the rules.
Did someone cede time to him?
Yes.
Okay, so he gets four minutes.
Right, that's what I just said.
The next person will get 24 seconds. And that'll be the end. It's right after four minutes and 44 seconds.
Okay, all right. Well, but she was before him.
Oh, if she was before, then she gets two minutes.
She gets the two, unfortunately. That's my mistake. I'm sorry, Robbie. I'm very.
You get two minutes and 44 seconds.
So now you want me to take my speech that last week I was told I had six minutes. I wrote a six-minute speech. Found out at four o'clock today that I only had four minutes, so I had to rip my speech apart. Now you're telling me I only have two minutes. I just think that's wrong. I don't think you should change your policies so people don't have the right to speak. You're the new acting superintendent. You should take a stand and allow us to speak. How, that's so wrong.
Jackie.
You have two minutes.
All right, thanks. Hello, everybody. I just wanted to say that we are a school, we are a school, and we are a community. We are excellent. We are a neighborhood school in which people know each other, and we know each other deeply, and for decades, and maybe generations. It's our opportunity, this is an opportunity given to our neighborhood school that we, not many people have in all of this country. We have each other's backs. We push each other's up. We help each other for lifetimes. There are so many people in, you know, at your table that I've known forever. And there are people sitting at this table that are truly excellent, and we need to let them know. One sitting right here across from me is Dustin Seaman, who built this district in his last eight and a half years. We should be kissing his feet and begging him to stay with us forever because we grow and we are excellent because of him. My kid did the science fair for over eight years and now judged the science fair. That grew from ceiling to hundreds of students participating because of Dr. Seaman. He brought human geography and opportunities abroad now. Our principal, Drew Stewart, that was just here, he, an amazing man. An amazing man who cares about our children, loves our community, who came to our academe competition, you know, all the way in Long Beach to support our children. He's excellent and amazing. And I have so much more to say about so many people. But I, what I, the reason I bring this all up is that what we say in our social media after what was a very jarring event is creating tremors throughout our district. The resignation of our superintendent is shrouded in mystery. He disappeared without notice or a goodbye in the middle of a semester. Teachers are scared. Parents are startled. That's when talented people start looking for opportunities elsewhere. When we, when people in power write BHUS Doge, it simply, it implies that there will be terminations without explanation, shrouded in mystery. Whether or not it was intended, this created a situation in which talented people leave. We need to keep our talent in this district. We need to make sure that people are not scared. Yes.
Time is up.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's, please speak. Quick. Thank you, Robbie.
Sure, thank you, Michelle.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Excuse me one second.
We didn't start the clock.
Mrs. Marcus, board members, and Acting Superintendent Dr. Hasty. I wish you well in your new role, but I think you're getting off to a rocky start. Good evening. I find myself here on yet another Tuesday evening. But here to shine a light on an absurdity harming KBEV and its students. KBEV is a student-run television station built by students for students to learn, create, and report with integrity. And yet it's under siege by people who have no business meddling in it. For 20 years, Mr. Carey has been a mentor, ensuring his students not only have creative freedom, but also learn responsibilities, ethics, and journalistic integrity. He doesn't dictate content. He teaches accuracy and reliability. KBEV is student-driven. It belongs to them, and they will carry its legacy forward. But we have a First Amendment issue, one that has caught the attention of the ACLU. And when the ACLU gets involved, it's not because they enjoy school board meetings. Then there's Ricky Lee, a BHHS grad, who's employed to supervise the gate program, but has been locked out because some administrator is playing gatekeeper. KBEV's founder, Dusty Stiles, has devoted 56 years to the studio's engineering and signal maintenance, yet he's been shut out too. And why has Ricky's paycheck been held hostage? He's been told he'll only be paid if he meets with Dr. Horvath. That's not policy. That's extortion. Is this really about passwords? As my friend Michael Rosoli said, "Go start your own YouTube channel." To paraphrase Treasurer of the Sierra Madre, "Passwords?" Ricky doesn't need any stinking passwords. And if you don't get the reference, Google it. And if Dr. Horvath or anyone else think they can pressure students into handing them over, think again. Channel 6 is owned by the city, not the district. The content belongs to the students. It is protected under academic freedom and the First Amendment. So you don't own KBEV. You don't get to censor it. You don't get its passwords. Let the students tell their stories. Let them run their station. Or is there someone in this administration afraid of what they might say? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have 30 seconds left. 30 seconds left for... Janet Hassan.
I give it to Ava.
She's giving it to Ava.
I have 30 seconds on it.
I understand, I understand. But please don't start the clock. I was just trying to explain that you said specifically that it was per each topic, 20 minutes. And we had two people talking that were on a completely different topic.
According.
So we should get an extra four minutes. I'm telling you that because in quotes, I went back, I looked, it said, "You guys need a new policy, correct?" The new policy states 20 minutes per subject, not for all subjects combined.
Okay, let me explain one thing. The topic is right now, for the agenda hearing period, which would, that is the topic, the agenda hearing period, which we gave 20 minutes to. Unfortunately, there was a misunderstanding on somebody's part, but I read that the rule will be, if you, for example, the gentleman that wanted to speak on the topic that was earlier, I called him at that point. But the topic right now is the public hearing period, period, and it could be anything at that point, but it's 20 minutes to that one number. That's unfortunate.
No, 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 because I'm trying to explain in the most respectful way possible that.
I understand.
And I want to be heard, and I'm asking if I can have the respect of two minutes to speak and say what I feel because it's unfair. It was 20 minutes.
Okay, I'm gonna give you the privilege of the final speaker then, okay?
I appreciate it.
But I have, okay, you're welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Ava Wiseman, and I'm in 11th grade. And this is my fourth time speaking today for Mr. Carey. In a perfect world, Mr. Carey would already be back in his classroom doing what he does best, teaching, inspiring, and changing lives. But we don't live in a perfect world. We live in a world where a dedicated teacher is punished for telling the truth. A world where a man who actually harmed a student is allowed to stay, while the person who exposed it is punished. A world where the people in charge would rather silence a problem than solve it. And now, the more I look into this situation, the more disturbing it becomes. As we all know, it was no secret that Mr. Carey was against the new changes regarding the CTE program and budget cuts. So I did my research, and I went back and found an old PTA meeting from October, before Mr. Carey was placed on administrative leave. And I want to read you a direct quote from the administration believes should happen, what the administration believes should happen to teachers who don't agree with their plans. Dr. Seaman said, "We will sidestep teachers and find others to represent. And if you're not the right person on the bus, there's the door, so I'll pull over to the curb." What this quote is implying is that anyone who stands up against the board's plans will be punished, which is interesting because Mr. Carey wasn't on board with your plans. And one month later, he is mysteriously placed on leave. So tell me, was this really about the video, or was it about silencing someone who dared to challenge you? In a perfect world, Mr. Carey would be here, making students feel seen and valued. He would be helping kids discover their passions, giving them opportunities they never thought possible. He would have, he would be shaping futures just like he always has done. Instead, you left an empty space that no one else can fill. You've ignored the students, the parents, the teachers, who made it clear we want Mr. Carey back, and we are not going away. We will keep speaking. We will keep fighting because we refuse to accept this injustice. In a perfect world, Mr. Carey would already be back, but since this world is far from perfect, I'm standing here again telling you to fix what you broke. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've now come to the part of the board meeting with the communications from the board members. Remy, have you something you want to say?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Excuse me. I submitted, I've been sitting here for five hours, and now I'm told I can't speak because I wrote the wrong thing. I want to speak on publicity, or communications, or finance. And how come I'm not on there? I resent that. You can't shut us off because we did a different kind of word. So I need to speak. I'm here to speak.
Okay.
I don't care what the department is, but I.
Okay, I want to, for one, let's get, I just want to be really clear on the process here. And this is, I think, I will be the first to say, there has been some confusion around the process, and we know that. We are getting better, and I want to make sure you guys all know that we are hearing what you're saying. And there is actual items that we will be putting forth in the future. However, I want to get really clear on this process. A couple things with the expectations of the boardroom. We are to act civil. We have a policy around being civil. And that's why it was said when Ms. Marcus started about raising voices, profanity, all these other pieces. Part of that civility is also acting and behaving within the norms of the meeting, and it's critical. So I'm trying to help you guys so we can get through the process and do it right, and next time we'll get better as a group and a community. The one piece about this, and I understand, people said topic versus item. I get it. We all get it. However, the rule is, and it is a policy, we get 20 minutes per item, and that's how it is. As you submit for these, you come in the order that they come in, we put them in that order. You can see the time like you have done. I understand the frustration, but we're implementing a policy that we already had in existence that was our rule. And I know it's frustrating when you have seen things change over the last three meetings, but we are going to get better, and we're gonna be consistent moving forward. What I would also suggest is you can send communications to us. You know, and we could talk as a board, and I will talk with the board about how that could, you know, go forward too, so we can communicate some of those things. But coming to the meeting, when we're talking about open, the open comment, that is an item. It is maxed out per our bylaw at 20 minutes. So again, I, we are hearing you guys. We are hearing you guys. We are hearing you. And we are going to move forward, and for the next meeting, I wanted to say, we will have open comment again, and it will be limited according to the policy. If you want to speak to any item, I need. So. So you could take the name. Everybody signs up. Anybody can sign up, but we have to take it in the order received. And that's it. And so once the order is received, everybody gets a max of two minutes. And we do have, and that's it. So when seated, so it stops at 20 minutes. I'm going to stop there. We're gonna move the meeting forward. If we cannot move forward, we are going to need to call a recess and take a break.
You're changing the rules.
We need to call recess.
I call for recess.
We can call recess. We can clear the boardroom, and then we can.
And I think it's wrong.
Well, does anybody have any board comments?
Yes, yes.
Yes, I do. Okay.
It's a slut of a fairytale. Everyone is sitting here waiting to speak. This is wrong. Each one of you has a responsibility to listen to us.
Is there any, ma'am, is there anyone other than you who still wants to speak?
I don't have the list. You have the list.
No.
You need to at least tell me that I'm not gonna be speaking or even running for that.
All right, I'm going to call for a recess. We'll be adjourning to the boardroom.
I think it's wrong. Each one of you, each one of you who wants to run for something else will be remembered, and we will not vote for you. A board should never silence their community.
A board should never silence their community. It's so messed up.
Well, that's a hump. So we're humped up. We need to make sure you go where comments...
Quizzes. Oh, the back.
How many? If I got two, yeah. Here's what we're gonna do. We go back and sit down. I'm gonna go tell them, we have two more speakers, and two minutes each. And it's your first, your second, okay? And then we'll interview, read, whatever. I understand the twenty minutes. Full thirty. Okay, I can't. Here's anything else. Okay, done. Okay, okay. Get it, get it. I know I asked a lot, get it. And I'm gonna figure the rest out. I have an idea about that. I'm gonna ask. Because the only other line is right now, I'm gonna do that one. Everybody just sit down, let's give her two more comments. Okay?
I just am unclear, if you have more than one major issue, like...
Oh, oh, so each item? You need to speak up to twenty minutes on the item, twenty times. So, okay. Okay. So we got, let's move forward. So we got two, we got two right now. Let's just get in our seats, we have to sit down. But it wasn't an item on the actual... Okay. Guys, are we ready? Okay, so, hold on, I have a few good questions for everybody here. If you, if you want to make a comment, it depends, and you want to speak on a specific item. Remember, the public comment is dealt with one item. So if you want any other item, it's a max of twenty minutes per item. And you will get up to two minutes for that item. You might want to speak on five items in that area, but you only get two minutes unless people see that.
So if we find a personal issue, we can change that situation. We can have that in gym night.
Give it to Jindai. Give it to Jindai. We have to contact. Do we need to... Well, I would contact, see where my stuff's at. I'm just... Guys, let's... Hey, it's late, I finished, I'm gonna say two minutes. Okay? You're gonna go first, you're gonna go second. We...
If you don't want to speak, and you want your comments, I want to address them. You can handle it. It's not... Thank you.
Oh my God, they turned the...
What, are they trying to censor us? They just censored.
Maybe the ECI should do it.
The camera is on, it's enough.
Of the... I'm sorry. My name is Alona Sherman. I'm a resident, a parent, former president of Hawthorne PTA for two years, and now I come before you because I'm very upset at the way that you're spending money. This is my tax bill. It keeps going up. The problem is, the more money you have, the more money you're spending recklessly, okay? Why are you having budgets, and why aren't we seeing what these creative expense accounts are? Why are you hiring people, like a PR communications person, for $247,000 a year? I have news for you. I just talked to one of the heads of Beverly Hills... Beverly Hills, Beverly Hills has a PR communications person for a city of almost 40,000 people, and she's getting paid $127,000. I don't understand who approved to have a PR person here, and how you guys can justify having someone who creates, disseminates information, either to protect someone, or I don't even know what. And plus, we're a public school. There's no public institution, high school, that has a PR person. In addition to, in addition to that, I just find that you're spending money without a whole lot of thought, because you have too much money coming in. And also, the way that you've run this meeting today is an embarrassment. Changing things and not allowing, not allowing us, the parents, the people who sat here for five hours to speak. You want respect from us, but you're not giving us any respect. I honestly say, you know, it doesn't send a positive message to anyone in this district. Further, all of you, I know, have aspirations to go further, and all of us are voters. We're not going to forget this debacle. This is so embarrassing.
Thank you.
We have one more speaker. Michael, you're good, go ahead.
Thank you. The following statement is from Dusty Stiles, the founder of KBEV, and the maintenance person for the last 55 years. "It strikes me what's going on in the media center. It's move fast and break things. The media center has been a successful program at BHHS for going on 55 years, and suddenly we have an abrupt halt to normal activity. This seems to have been a focus on changing, on changing staff, but not much consideration for structure or managing the students' activities or in learning. In fact, it's a pretty sorry example and a pretty sore lesson to the students of how to manage changes. Regardless of how, of whom may be at fault, the students are the clients here, and the staff changes over, wait, and staff change overshoot be proper example of how things are done. Those of us who normally work in the media center are still in the dark, and those who are allowed in the center do not seem to have a clear or productive overview of expected student learning. Sorry I couldn't get, I couldn't be here today. Thank you, Dusty Stiles." Now, this is my comment. How is it acceptable for you to try and turn off our cameras, to limit our First Amendment rights and our student journalism? You can't turn off our cameras like that. That's our media to be able to publish. You can't do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that will end, public comment. And we will move on. And now I will call for the comment from the board members, if they have any comments to make.
I actually have one comment.
Go right ahead.
Smart Pass at our school has been a problem for, I think, many administrators, because there hasn't been, there's been like problems with it updating, and for leaving school, it becomes a big headache for not only students, but also the security guards I know. So it's just something I wanted to put out there, maybe we should like look more into it. And it's, I think it's like a technical difficulty on Smart Pass's like app, but maybe we should look through like a different app to go to, but I just wanted to let you guys know about it.
Mr. Russell, so we're...
Thank you. It's unfortunate that certain people had such intense feelings about my social media post, but let me, for those that don't understand what the words DOGE mean, at least in the current administration, it means the Department of Government Efficiency. And what that means is it's an ideological stance that we believe that we're wasting money on things federally, statewide, and especially here. That is why we're elected, is to open up the books, take a look at things, critically analyze them, and figure out how your tax dollars should be best spent. That is exactly what we're doing. So that post that I made was not about an individual, it definitely was not speaking on behalf of the board, it was my own personal view, but it also showed a dedication to exactly what our job is, and that is to make sure that your tax dollars are properly spent. So ma'am who just spoke, I agree with you. I do not agree with how a lot of our money is spent, and that is why we are here, is to make sure that your tax dollars are spent properly. So for those that don't like my post personally, and your emotions take over, I'm sorry, but my job is still the same, and our job is still the same, is to effectively and properly spend your tax dollars for the benefit of every single student, and that's exactly what we're doing.
Mrs. Manager.
Thank you. Yes, thank you so much. I'll keep it short and sweet. I just want to let our community know that this is a board that is actually quite united. It doesn't mean that we agree with every syllable or everything that comes out of the other's mouth, but at the end of the day, we are having very open and honest conversations with one another, we are sharing perspectives, and more often than not, we are coming out exactly on the same page. And we have only been working together for a couple of weeks. Our first board meeting all together was, I believe, January 28th. And so I apologize that the transition and getting things going took so long, but please understand that we are coming together, we are on the same page, we are working with Dr. Seaman, Mrs. Collins-Williams, Dr. Hasty. We have our team around us, we are working at the advice of our council, and we're moving full steam ahead. Our vision for the next 30, 60, 90, 180 days is clear, and it's clean, and it's gonna happen, and I think that everybody is ultimately gonna see that we have been behaving with integrity. The transparency is not always there, but that's because we cannot speak about employees. We cannot, we are limited in what we can talk about. So you all can serve it to us, but we cannot serve it back to you, and we're, we have to exercise our restraint, and we have to comply with the law. But you have five board members and three administrators sitting up here who are waking up every day with a laser focus to the future. And I ask all of you, and I invite all of you, to work with us to make the right financial decisions, to make the right academic decisions. You all witnessed the conversation tonight. The focus is clear, it's on the students. We have, we are not here to tear any programs that are beloved apart, we are not here to take funds away from certain students and put them toward other students. We know the programs that make our students happy, and we also know what the parents have been asking of us to improve on. And our plan is to do all of the above. These are the conversations that we're having. How can we do the best for our students and for our community? So I just ask you all for a moment of grace to allow us to sift through the transition, to come together as a board, and to make the right decisions, which I know we are going to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. I also want to, I want to say that we are listening to every single one of you. We do respect every one of you. We do want the respect in return because it is a respectful community. We're all here for the same reason. We are here for the students. We are here to improve our district. Nobody is here with any other agenda. I can tell you that firsthand. We work very well together, and we all want the same thing. So with that, I do want to give a report. I would like to report that last week, I attended the Finance Committee meeting with Board President...